Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 24th. I would like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that we take just a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as selectmen and for personal reflection. Okay, in accordance to Mass. General Law 30A, Section 20E, I announce that this meeting is being recorded by Islam Meadow Community Access Television and the Board of Selectmen's Office. If there is anyone else present that is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Okay, let the record state that the gentleman from the Republic, what is your name again?
Ben Lambert.
Ben Lambert is recording. Okay, all right. Now, moving on, we have a 6 o'clock appointment. It's a proposal to change the numbering on the, excuse me, erect signage on Benton Drive, Diane Nato, Action Business Services at 15 Benton Drive, and James White and Gary Stone, Whitestone Partners, 31 Benton Drive. Are they here?
Yes.
Okay, please come on up.
Hi, thank you, very nice meeting you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, so I guess we'll start with the lady first, if that's okay? If that's your pleasure? Okay, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Very well, thank you, and yourself?
Very fine.
Good.
Now, I'm here to, because of course you requested me to be here, and I would like to explain that I would like signage at the entrances of the park to accommodate any problems with numbering. And the reason is, it would be the most simple and the best solution and the least costly for everybody, including the town. Because as you well know, when you change an address, and you're not just changing an address, you're changing a building with tenants, so it's huge amounts of people and money, and we have to change everything. You have deeds, you have, I have leases, I have dealings with the IRS, the state, everybody does. And you know how it is when you just change your mail. Good luck when you change a number, because it's going to be monumental. We have websites, we have phone books, we have advertising, we have, you name it. It is an involved venture. And what about the registry of deeds? I own 15 Benton. If you decided to change it to God knows what number, who absorbs all the legal costs and the problems? Does the town? Does anyone know that?
We certainly could check with council after. But we're here to listen to what you have to say.
And let me give you some history, why perhaps the numbering is so inadequate. I was the first building on the street. My neighbor, not this man, but the other one, they were originally part of Industrial Drive. Instead of making them change their number in the beginning of time, that was not done. And then, when they expanded both sides, because it used to be a little tiny cul-de-sac, they'd opened it up. And God only knows who allowed that numbering system to go from where McGill is on. And then you have another problem. At the end of the street, which is Denzlow Road, you have a building that's allowed to have its major entrance, its only entrance on Benton, but their address is 180 Denzlow. So anyone arriving from that end, looking at numbers, is messed up from the get-go. Right from the get-go, if they come in through that entrance. And that, I'm sure, isn't even anyone is aware of. But that is something that should never happen.
Okay.
So, what I would like, if at all possible, and if the town would find it in their wisdom, to do the numbering, leave it as is, because it's going to be a nightmare if you change it. It'll be so very costly to your taxpayers, meaning me and you, that signage could handle it. Just like when you go anywhere, they tell you, like, you can use Georgetown condominiums for an example. They have the street, and they have an arrow with numbers, like, say, 38 through 45 with a left arrow, and numbers 145 to 250 with another arrow. It just helps. That's all people need. I mean, I've been there since 1978. That is my feeling, but if you do go to the changing the numbers, I'd like to know who's responsible for every cost involved? And how do you go to the registry of deeds? And, you know, it might make the sale of a building very difficult, or anything. Anything legal is just going to be a nightmare. I mean, if you've even moved and had to change your address, it's a nightmare.
I didn't have that experience, so all I did was just fill out a card and it was done. It was very simple, so.
Well, you know, I see it. I have tenants, and I have maybe 15 of them, and just the changing for every single one of my tenants is going to be extremely costly, extremely. And I don't feel I should ever have to absorb a cost like that, ever, nor should they. And I think it could be rectified with a simple signage.
Okay. Does that conclude that? So, we're going to give him a chance to say, and then we'll speak as a board.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
We certainly run into the same issues every day. We have clients trying to find us, to see us, to pick up their vehicles or projects that we've completed for them. And if you rely on GPS to get to our place, which most people do, they're going to dump you at another end of the street. So every day, I've got the office manager, whoever answers the phone, trying to guide somebody in from one end of the street or the other. So I recognize that it is a big issue. I was talking to Diane about this. I certainly agree it's a big cost for the business owners to make the change, also for any tenants that they might have as well. Signage is certainly something that we're in favor of looking at, because that could direct people down from one end to the other, even coming in from industrial. So that might be a very good solution, if we can get some kind of a proof or layout that we'd be glad to take part of, you know, helping out with, and just seeing if that kind of a setup, you know, at both ends of the street, maybe on industrial, would help solve the problem. Because it is key that we get people to our places, and even off hours, when we're not there to get the phones, there are times when people are coming to pick up or drop off things, and we need to make sure that they find us, because they travel quite a distance to get there. So I think signage certainly is one way to look at that. I also agree that if there is a change in the numbering, it's going to affect us probably in many ways, other than just, you know, changing the number on the physical building itself, but to go through anything that's produced with your name on it, and then all the records that are kept throughout the state and, you know, government records as well. So that would be quite an expense, so maybe we can look at the sign as an option, or signs as an option, and go from there.
Okay. All right, that's it?
That's what I got.
All right, Mr. Gorman?
Ms. Nato, you say you've had that since 1978?
Yes.
Have you had much problems?
There's always, there's been problems with numbering, of course. In the beginning, of course, there wasn't, but as time moved on and the numbering got more erratic, it certainly has become a problem, and many times, you know, I've been in business so long, I'm pretty well established, and people aren't really looking to come in to visit me. But it is a problem. I have accountants that rent space for me. But I also have a building with three huge number 15s. I mean, they're the size of that East Long Meadow sign on my building, just as a landmark. But the numbering is off. But part of it is because of what's transpired over the years. You can't allow, I mean, my brother had built a building across the street, it used to be old time, and that was 175. Now, how could that be?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and he used to be a tenant of mine, until he grew too much, then he moved over. But you had odd and even both sides. It's crazy.
So it probably really needs to be corrected if it's so crazy.
I don't think so. I think it's crazy, but until GPS becomes the only way and they take down street signs, I think signage, people can still read.
Yeah.
They have that ability. It's amazing, you know, but they do. Just like when we're on a highway, I just came back from Florida and I drove. Now, I can read signs, I know what they mean, I know what left and right means. It's really a simple, very cost-effective solution.
It might come down to a matter of safety also, but let me go to Selectmen Federation.
Thank you. I had one question that I might be able to bounce off council if I can get his nose out of the book for a second. Well, he was studying. Say, the example I'm going to use, in Palmer and its associated suburbs, if you want to call them that, Three Rivers, Bonneville, they had a problem with fire departments years ago. And they took everybody, like, from Three Rivers, they put the one, like, one prefect in front of their number. So instead, if your house number was 243, it became 1243. I think Bonneville became like 2243. How does that work with, like, the deeds and with the department, you know, with real estate, if you're talking about, you know, the deed to your home and everything? Is that a big switch to, no?
Not really. My understanding of the numbering system on streets is that it's related to some of the infrastructure locations, such as laterals for water and sewer to tie in where they're located, so the numbers sort of indicate where the connections are. At least that's my understanding, and I could be wrong on that. But the change of a street address, a name of a street, or the numbering on a street, really, isn't that big a deal town-wide. It is probably to the individuals who have the street number or the street address. The registry of deeds wouldn't, doesn't really identify properties by street address as much as they do by the owner and the, you know, designation of the street that the property's located on. But the biggest issue, if you're considering changing numbers, especially where you're, you have numbers that are on the wrong side of the street, which is what my understanding of this situation is, is that the GPS systems create a system, people are used to numbers being right, you know, odd, even the different sides of the street. And so, long-term, for the benefit of the community, you might believe, but I would suggest you check with the police and fire departments and emergency services, such as ambulance, that these numbers be broadly conforming with the practice and the numbering of the streets in general in the community. But that's just merely a suggestion.
The question I have right now is regarding the emergency services. If they needed to find us or anybody, what would they do? They put it into, what, the GPS? Would they just?
We're on a regular route for the police department and the fire department, and they know where we are located. I certainly would hope they would know where their taxpayers are located in the industrial park.
But in the case that somebody from a different community is called in to ask to assist, they wouldn't know?
Yeah.
They may not know. And this is, I mean, like you said, it is a problem.
Well, I think, if you don't mind my speaking, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but it's been a problem for many years. And who's responsible for numbering the street? Who was responsible? Is there, I mean, let's, let's be realistic about this. Who's in charge of doing that? I mean, there is a department, correct? Who might that department be? Does anyone know? Do you know?
Who was responsible? Who was responsible for numbering the streets?
Originally, the number was assigned by the building department at the time the application for the permit was issued. At least it is currently. I can't speak to what the practice was 30 years ago.
Excuse me, I will recognize you, Mr. Uphearn, from the DPW.
Certainly. Current practice, and it may have been delegated from the building department. Typically today, the building department will check the DPW. DPW actually generates the number, gives it back to the building department.
When was that done?
I don't know, I can't tell.
This is a situation that goes back 30 years or better.
Yeah.
Well, I did receive one call, maybe 20 years ago, from the Select Board Secretary. I don't recall her name, but it was about 20 years ago, and she said, "We're thinking about changing numbers." I said, "Have the new guys change theirs. Don't, you know, I'm not interested." But it's gotten progressively worse, and, I mean, you can't, you know, and then you have other Benton, you know, the housing is all Benton, whatever.
Yeah, Benton Estates, yeah.
Whatever it is. And then you have, you know, it's just, I think it's something that could be rectified with signage, I really do. And I would hope your police and fire already know. I know they do, because we periodically have to send who tenants are. I mean, that's a general procedure. The police and fire request that from you, and you send it in, and your assessors know who you are and who the tenants are, because they're happy to tax us, they know where to reach us. And, you know, I mean, that's just how it is. I think that, frankly, that the best route is signage, because it's, will be a nightmare, the follow-up and the, you know, I do office work for a living. It'll be a problem all the way through.
So we'll take that all under advisement? If there's nothing else to be added from either Selectmen?
No, I gotta agree with her. I think signage would be the least, in my opinion, the least costly, because it wasn't their fault to begin with. There's a mess up somewhere way back that nobody seems to know. And I think, you know, try signage and see if it works out. I mean, they don't seem to have a problem now, but like, but I gotta reiterate what Angela said, if a fire department comes in from Wilberham or Ham, then, you know, we gotta have some idea of where to send them down there, you know, because they're not as familiar with these guys.
No, I know, but your police department always directs that, too. And they know.
So what we'll do is, okay, Selectmen Federation?
I'm also.
Okay, so we'll take that under advisement, I'm sure, and we can place it back on as an agenda item, and then, on the 8th. Be good.
Do we show for that as well?
You don't need to, because it would just be the Board of Selectmen that was speaking on it.
Thank you very much.
We're collecting information right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice seeing you again, nice meeting you. Very nice meeting you, thank you.
Okay, we're a little early for the hearing, and that has to be done right at 6:30?
Correct.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion for a short recess, if you could indulge me.
Sure.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, bringing this meeting back to order? Okay, bringing this meeting back to order at 6:30, we have a hearing with Michael Carabatta and Ben Cody, Park Place North and Park Place South on Leo Street. Would you like to?
Certainly. Now, Ben Cody's on vacation.
Okay, so we'll hear from you, and then we'll hear from any residents as well. So we'll hear from them first, and then we'll hear from any residents that, or anybody that would like to speak on it.
My name is Michael Carabatta.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The clerk needs to open up the hearing. I apologize. Rookie mistake.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of Islam Meadow will hold a public hearing on closing off the dirt road connecting Park Place, Park Place North and Park Place South, as submitted by Michael Carabatta and Ben Cody. This hearing will be held on Tuesday, July, June 24th, 2014, at 6:30 PM, in the Town Hall Hearing Room 60 Center Square, Islam Meadow, Mass. 01028, as submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Here, here. Do I need to bring you up?
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Again, my name is Mike Carabatta. I just want to represent that with Ben Cody, he's actually on vacation. So about a year ago, I built a house in that neighborhood, and Ben Cody also lives in that neighborhood, and there's a little dirt strip that the DPW is used for an accessway between Park Place North and Park Place South. So myself and Ben, we approached the neighbors, we approached the cemetery commission to see if we could, in fact, loam the seed over that to get rid of that gravel right away, if you will. It's an unimproved road, it doesn't really serve any purpose, the town doesn't maintain it, the town doesn't plow it. So we thought, in the best interest of all the neighbors, it would be nice, just if we stopped the traffic from going through there, and make it easier on the neighbors that in fact do live there. So that's, the process started about a year ago, fire signed off on it, police signed off on it, DPW signed off on it, and then I'm told that, you know, the Selectmen wanted to talk about it. So here is a year later, and we're talking about it.
Well, no, we actually, it came to us for approval.
Okay.
And then we actually said we wanted to have a hearing on it, because while it may be, I think the public has a right to weigh in on.
Certainly.
On things such as this. And so that's how we got to here.
Okay.
Okay, if that's all that you have to say, we're going to invite, okay then. We'll invite anybody else up, if you want to step back, or?
I would like to.
You come on up, and you could go back to your seat.
Sure.
Hi, would you like?
Hello, everybody.
Mind introducing yourself?
I'm Marilyn Poehler, and I'm one of the Butters on Park Place, South Park Place, and that's my interest here tonight.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. And Zula.
Please meet you.
And Richie. And Billy.
Thank you.
Good short runs.
So do I. I couldn't hear Mr. Carabatta very well, but I did hear him. I'm wondering if I should sit or if I can be heard.
Whatever is your pleasure.
Okay, well.
The mic is there, so.
Oh, I can, okay.
I'm sure. Okay, I would like you to speak into the mic. I think it picks up. Is she being picked up?
Can you hear me all right?
I can hear.
Okay, can every, all right. Well, first of all, I appreciate that you gave me the opportunity to come tonight, and that this is a hearing to hear both sides of the story. And Mike has presented his side, and I would like to do likewise.
Okay.
But I, first, before I begin, would like to ask Michael what the purpose is of his desire to close the dirt road between North and South Park Place, what his motivation is.
Well, then, I guess you need to come back up here, Mr. Carabatta.
There's no motivation whatsoever, it's just to make it a little bit more quieter of a neighborhood for the neighbors that bought that road. There's no.
No motivation, other than to make it quieter?
Yeah, it's actually going to cost me time and money, so there's no motivation in it for me whatsoever.
Okay. I find that it's very quiet. I've lived there for over 30 years, and I grew up there as a child. That dirt road has been there since the beginning of East Long Meadow, and there's very little traffic, very little traffic.
And that's the point, why have it? That's what the two neighbors are telling me.
Why have a dirt road?
Yeah, maybe.
Why not have a dirt road?
Well, I guess it's, I guess it's opinion, that the two neighbors that have bought the property don't want the road, don't want the dirt street.
Who were the two Butters?
The people that bought the new house and Ben Cody.
Neither of them is here.
Well, that's true, but I'm speaking on their behalf.
You're speaking on Smith's behalf as well?
Yes, I sold them the house.
I know that you did, and it's been two years, not one, I believe.
Okay, well.
Anyway, so his desire to shut the road, close the road and put in grass is just aesthetic, perhaps?
That's one way of looking at it.
Okay. And what's another way to look at it?
Would stop traffic, it would give two neighbors that have cars going through their backyards to fuel, no more.
There's very little traffic, I can attest to that. Very little traffic. If five, four, five cars go by there a day, that's probably the maximum that goes through. I think that, from my point of view.
Okay.
I would say that, this may sound a little bit odd, perhaps, I think the road is charming. I think it's a little piece of history for me, having grown up in that house since I was eight years old. And now I purchased the house from my parents and moved back there, and we've been there for 30 years. And we like the quaintness of that. We like it that people don't really know that it's there, they don't know, because it's hard to see from Route 83. And so, I see no reason why it needs to be grassed over. My concern would be, if that were to happen, who's going to be responsible for mowing it and care of it, for it? Part of this, part of the lawn would be part of the cemetery.
Correct.
And would you assume that the secret, the person who does the cemetery would be doing lawn?
They told me they would take care of it.
Is that right?
They did.
Oh, that's news to me, I didn't know that. Well, nevertheless, it's not really all belonging to the cemetery.
No, they're up to the middle, the median of it, and the two Butters are up to the middle of it as well. So the two Butters.
Okay, so the two Butters and the cemetery are going to be responsible for upkeep of that?
Yes.
Well.
For argument's sake, right now, they do upkeep a lot of it already, because I think the right of way is 50 feet wide roughly. I think the gravel strip is, let's say, 15 feet. So right now, the cemetery actually cuts some of it, and the two Butters actually cut some of it.
That's true.
So we're going to take 15 feet more of it and add basically seven feet to each particular party.
Well, I see no reason to do it, frankly. I'm happy the way it is, and I really must say that I'm disappointed that he would like to try to do that, would like to attempt to do that. I'm all for leaving it the way it is. And I just might want to add that my husband is unable to come tonight, and he doesn't necessarily agree with me, but he doesn't, you know, he doesn't care one way or the other.
Okay.
But I think because I lived in the house and I just enjoy it the way it is.
All right. Well, that's the purpose of hearings. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Okay, so I guess, are you going to be asking Mr. Carabatta some, any questions? Are you just going to state your purpose? So come on up, and we'll ask the two of them to vacate the seats again, get your exercise today, Mr. Carabatta. Identify yourself, sir.
Hi, Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
I mean, nice to see you again, excuse me.
I heard about this through the, through the agenda, and my question to the Board of Selectmen is, who owns the property? I don't believe the town owns it until it's taken. I believe, being a paper street, that the property owners on either side own to the middle, so it sounds like this is private property, and I don't know when the town started saying that you can't loam and seed your private property. I realize in the north end off of Westwood Ave, there's many paper streets, and most of them, you wouldn't even know were there, unless you bring up our GIS and look, it's a little alleyway in between a couple houses, there's dead end strips, and almost all of them are grassed and loamed and seeded, and they look beautiful. Obviously, down the road, if someone chooses to develop the paper street, then they have to put it into the town standards, then the town has to go to town meeting to take the road, for it to become town property, for the town to allocate what to do. I just, I mean, I realize the streets, I can't even call it a street, because it's a dirt path that's there, but, I mean, to my knowledge, it's private property. I mean, I may be wrong, it may be, I would ask town council if it's, if it's in limbo, if the town owns it, or if the Butters own to the middle.
Okay, is that everything that you have to say?
That's my thought, I think.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
I'll recast.
Sure.
Mr. Page.
Mr. Gorman would like to, Selectmen Gorman would like to ask your question.
That street goes from where to where, the paper street?
Which one? Leo Street, I believe it goes from Park North to Park South. It runs right along the backside of the cemetery.
To the town yard?
No.
You said the town yard.
It goes up. It goes up, it used to run up to the town yard.
I think that's why, that's what its original purpose was, to access the town yard. But the town yard does not use that as a right of way or an access.
And even though it's on there as a paper street, I mean, you still can't construct a structure or anything like that on it. Just, like I said, fencing, stuff like that is not allowed on paper streets, but...
So that went right to the back of the town yard at one time?
Yes, at one time.
I believe it goes, I believe the paper street goes right up to the back of it.
And that's grassed in now?
Yes.
Yes, it is, we put the grass in.
Um, I don't know, my, my understanding is that the cemetery owns halfway to it. And whoever owns those lots owns to the other half, only for the purpose of they could put something on according to the middle of the road. You know, a sideage for their yard, that's where they would consider going by. I mean, you're on, you're on the...
From what I understand, like I said, it's basically they're both properties owned up to the center strip in that right of way.
Yeah. I mean, if they were to put a garage on one of those houses, they, they could go from the center of the road would be their side lot. No?
No, it has to go from the paper street line.
From the paper street?
Because there is a possibility that somebody could develop the road if someone owns...
So how wide is that paper street?
How wide is it?
Yeah.
I think it's forty feet.
Forty feet?
Am I sort of correct? Yeah.
Forty feet wide?
Yes.
Forty feet wide?
Yes.
I think we need to be sure 'cause it seems that I'm getting different information.
I'm sure it's on the GIS.
Okay, so we'll have to research that and get some more information. Do you have any further questions? Selectman Federici?
I was just curious if Town Council could shed a light on the fact, on the ownership fact.
The only thing I have is the material that I received from the ward's staff today regarding this, which is, one of the documents I received is a, a letter dated September 13th, 2012 from Frank Morandi, Assistant Town Engineer, indicating that, to the best of the department's knowledge, this is not a public way. That it's a private way and therefore is not something that would have, the town would have any right to really discontinue. You don't have any interest in it at this point. If his impression is correct and it is a private way, then barring some quirk in the deeds to the chain of title, to the abutters, to this Leo Street, those abutters would own to the center of the way and each abutter would have the right to travel on Leo Street to reach his or her property. So that if what's being proposed were to be accomplished, it would seem that the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Public Works would be involved. It would be title examinations or by the current owners, an agreement among the current owners to give up their rights to access this street. And then they would own to the center and then if they could make an agreement as to how they wanted to landscape or treat it, that would be the way to go. Now, that's based on just Mr. Morandi's letter saying that it's not a public way. And if it's not a public way, then it's really not a way that's under the jurisdiction of the town.
Okay. Now, with that being said, can you, you're welcome. Can we check to, to dot those i's and cross those t's to see who, who it owns to? Can we examine, examine the titles?
Well, I, I think the issue for the, for the board's perspective would be for the board to request confirmation from the town clerk as to whether this portion of Leo Street is a public way. If his records do not indicate that it's a public way, then it should be the position, I think, of the board or a considered position of the board could take to say, you have no jurisdiction and leave it to the abutters and the people in the neighborhood to see if they can work out some agreement to accomplish the goals that you want to accomplish. I can check with the...
So I guess it would go back to why, why did it come before us in the first place?
I'm guessing it was petition, it's brought forward by someone to be considered by the board.
Okay, so, so, so we're here. So I would make, I would entertain a motion to make sure that we receive a confirmation from the clerk, Town Clerk, as to what the ownership of, if this is a public way or a private way.
No, so moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I feel like doing something too late.
Mm-hmm. Wait a minute, I'm not sure, hold on just one minute, let me think about that. Let me finish the motion first.
All right.
It's been for, a sec, a moved and seconded discussion from the board.
The only discussion I had was obviously if it turns out that it's a private way, then, then really we would have no more involvement in it. So we, you know, because it's not a, it's not under our purview.
Okay, set. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What would you, the hearing hasn't been closed, so yes, you could say something, yes.
Thank you. I'm wondering about if there would be any issue that anyone could think of in terms of emergency vehicles coming in? You know, there'd be no access other than from Route 83 down South Park Place. And the street is very narrow, I don't know how, you know, a fire engine could, that could get down the street, I don't know. It's just very narrow and I'm worried about that.
We're worried about that, sure.
If I may through the chair?
We'll take that.
Quickly. I'll make a brief.
Advisement, okay, Selectman Federici?
Well, I was just gonna say that Mr. Carabata had noted that this has already been okayed by police, fire and DPW, so I assume fire...
That was over a year ago.
But, yeah, I'd say, yeah.
And you know, the fire department's gonna go, the fire department will travel a paved road, they're not gonna travel on a group road.
Well, first, first of all, we'll, we'll find out if we have jurisdiction through the Town Clerk. And if we do, then we will revisit that and we'll get this done and taken care of. 'Cause it, it really has been a long road, I do recognize that to you, Mr. Carabata. And I certainly am taking into advisement your concerns as, as a taxpayer. But if we have no, understand please that if we don't have jurisdiction over it and if that's true, it really shouldn't have come here. But we will make sure that we get down to the bottom of it at this point. Are we good with that? Okay. Thank you very much, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. No problem.
Oh, thank you.
He'll, he'll close it.
Yes, the public hearing is now closed.
No, how about that? Thank you. We're just a little bit late for Mr. Robert Parent. He's our Superintendent of Public Works. He's going to talk to us about the water and sewer agreement and the Elm Street construction project and DPW vehicle request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you again. Good to see you. So the DPW, it's okay?
Yes, please.
Thank you. The DPW has a couple of items on the agenda this evening. The first one I'd like to bring up is that we are requesting that the Board of Selectmen is co-signatories to the agreement between the Town of East Long Meadow and the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. We're requesting that the Board of Selectmen execute the agreement to extend the existing contract with Springfield for another five years. The Board of Public Works has already voted upon that on the 27th of May and has already executed the agreement on behalf of the Board of Public Works. The amendment is a fairly simple amendment and Mr. Dunne, you can speak to it if you have any questions, but it's essentially a time extension of the existing agreement. It doesn't change any terms and conditions of the agreement in any way.
And what is your timeline that you need to have this done?
Sooner than later, and I apologize for not bringing this to the board as soon as I should have. I was originally, my, my, my impression was that it was just the Board of Public Works that would sign off on it, but as dug deeper into, I recognized that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works had to both execute the documents. And I apologize that I should have gotten it to you in advance of July 1st to give you a, you know, a meeting cycle or two to get through the process.
Right.
I have...
This would be our first read on it?
Correct.
Okay.
I have shared a signed copy, executed copy by the Board of Public Works with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to let them know that it's moving through the approval process and haven't made any commitments to them in terms of, you know, when the Board of Selectmen would be in a position to execute the document. So I think we're, I don't think we'll have any issues with Springfield Water and Sewer Commission because, again, they understand that we're moving it through the necessary process and I've committed to keep them informed as to how the process is, is going.
All right. So that was the first one?
Okay. The next item I had was to give you a update on the Elm Street reconstruction project.
Yay.
Probably as many people in town have heard and have read, hopefully. Elm Street is, is scheduled for a full reconstruction, consisting of what is known as a reclamation process where Palmer paving will come in and they will essentially rototill or pulverize the surface material down to a depth of sixteen inches to improve the quality of the gravel that's underneath the existing road base, which is a big part of the problem, really, that the, the quality of the gravel that underlies the pavement. They will then place two layers of pavement on top of that reclaimed or pulverized surface. The schedule for the project is that we have been adamant with Palmer and they've been very agreeable that we do not do any work south of Maple Shade before July 7th, that we get through the Fourth of July parade with no impacts other than painting of utilities on the street and things like that that you may have seen already. We expect and will be confirming this in a meeting with Palmer tomorrow, that very shortly after the Fourth, probably as soon as the week of July 7th, they may start some of the heavy duty activity where they start bringing in the equipment. Backing up a little bit, the process takes place in a couple of different steps. The first step that you're going to see is where they take the existing structures that are at grade right now, the sewer manholes, the water gates, things like that. They need to lower them at least sixteen inches below grade so that when they come through with the pulverizing, the reclaiming machine, that they don't damage those structures. So step one, they'll be digging up each one of those structures just selectively around the structure to either remove the cover or lower the cover. Step two, they'll be doing the reclaiming process where they essentially turn the existing street surface into gravel. And then step three and four is where they put the pavement back in place. They will recontour the roadway to create a good cross section of the roadway. They'll then place the binder course and then they'll place the, the top course. And there will be time intervals in between each one of those steps. It won't all happen, you know, day after day, so I expect, again, step one is lowering the structures. That will probably take upwards of a week. The reclaiming process will probably take several days, it won't take weeks to do. And at that point, the residents will be driving on a gravel surface. It'll be a gravel surface that's flatter and smoother than the existing surface on, on Elm Street, but it will be a gravel surface. Then Palmer will come in and put the binder course down and that will, that could stay for a week or two, while they then have to bring the structures back up again to where the final grade of the roadway is going to be. And then the final course will be put on and the, the street will be striped and it'll be better than new at that point, better, certainly much, much better than it is today. And we expect that start to finish, that's probably about a month-long process, so, you know, it, there will be significant disruption to residents in town for, you know, most of a month. The worst disruption will be over a couple of weeks where the structures are lowered, the road is reclaimed. Once the binder course gets put in place, the road is flat at that point, there may be raised structures that you, you're probably fairly familiar with driving over. And then finally, the, the final course of paving will be placed.
And so we've, you've sent it in the reminder already?
It's been in the reminder, correct.
Okay. And each individual person on that road has been, received a letter of some sort from you?
They haven't individually, where we actually talked this evening with the Board of Public Works about reaching out. I don't know if it's possible to go through the town notification, you know, electronic notification process to see if we can get the word out. The, the question that came up at the Board of Public Works meeting tonight was, you know, will there be impact on people getting in and out of their driveways, for instance? And there, you know, there certainly will be when there's a piece of equipment in front of their driveway and that will happen. There'll be a dump truck in front of the driveway, there'll be a reclaiming vehicle in front of the driveway. The street won't be shut down for any periods of time, but at least one lane will likely be shut down during the construction process. And there will be delays, there'll be times when the contractor has to move equipment around and all traffic may stop for five minutes or ten minutes while they're re, you know, remobilizing equipment. So we're, we're strongly encouraging that people find different ways to get through town and get to Springfield during that construction interval because there will be delays, without a doubt.
Yeah.
Selectman Gorman?
Boom. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna use the grindings from the road for the base?
That's correct. What they, they're not milling the roadway, which may be what you're thinking of, where they, they grind up just the pavement and recontour. They're actually taking the pavement, which is essentially gravel or, or aggregate...
Yeah.
And breaking that into small pieces and mixing that into the gravel underneath the roadway.
How much of a base they putting?
They're putting, I believe, six. Now, this'll, what's there right now is, on average, four to five inches and they're putting four and a half inches back at this point. We have some cases where it's as much as six or seven inches, but in general, and for, you know, for the, for the traffic, the duty of the traffic and the number of vehicles, you know, pavement depth between four and five inches is, is what we recommend.
Are you gonna grind half, half of the road first so people can do the other half and then...
I expect that...
'Cause you said there wouldn't be a disruption, there would be too much of a disruption?
There's gonna be a disruption.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know there is.
To downplay that would be a sin.
I agree.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be major disruption, yeah.
I, and I, I will learn more when we start talking about the details of Palmer's schedule tomorrow, but I expect they will likely break the road into segments and then probably do one side of the segment and then the other side of that segment. And that might be a day segment. They might go up the left side in the morning and the right side in the afternoon or something like that. I don't expect they're going to go the entire length of the street in one pass.
Would it be better for you to block the whole street off? Because I, I worked on construction, I know how tough it can be, people, you know, when you're operating a backhoe or a roller and people are pulling out the iron, you know. There's no other way we can direct, you know, divert the traffic?
The, the challenge, we've looked at it and we've actually met with the city, I've met with the city engineer in Springfield, for instance, to talk about the impacts on Springfield because it will impact them as well.
Yeah.
There really, unfortunately, is very little detour ability. You have Maple Shade as a cross street and that's it. So given the number of residential developments that exist between Maple Shade and when it turns into Cooley and Springfield, you know, there, there's a lot of local traffic that one way or the other, you will have to continue to main traffic through there. Ideally, you'd have a network of roadways where you could detour traffic around, but it doesn't exist, unfortunately.
Yeah, what time will they be working on that from, from like eight to five, because you know, you know, five o'clock traffic is there?
I would expect probably seven to five.
Seven to five?
Yeah. It may be shorter some days, but I wouldn't expect it to be any longer than that. If, and if, if there's any reason, for instance, say they're, say they're putting the final, the, the most important part of this whole project, or the most, what would you say, most, most sensitive part of this project is the final top course of pavement.
Yeah, right.
And at that point, you know, we want to keep vehicles off that pavement as long as possible to get it, give it adequate time to, to cool down so that it can bear the weight of the vehicles. So, you know, that's the point where we're gonna have to be very careful about managing traffic to keep the vehicles off the, off the pavement as long as we can.
Yeah, the other question I wanted to ask you, how about like water services and stuff, you know, for digging across or gas, gas lines?
The, we have notified the gas company, they have indicated that other than lowering their, their shut offs, which they have to do, they have no plans to do any work within Elm Street. They will likely, as they often do, once the reclaim work is done, they'll likely get back out there and essentially sniff, look for gas leaks at that point. And if there's any issues that need to be dealt with, that's the time to deal with it while the road surface is still gravel as opposed to when the final surface is put in. So we've, we've been pushing them very hard to make certain they identify any problems that they have now. Likewise, we have TV inspected all our pipelines, all our sewer pipelines, all our cash basins, et cetera, to, to make certain they're in good shape. We have a couple of repairs that we'll be making as part of the ongoing work, but our goal is not to go back to that street for any time in the, in the near future.
Yeah, is that specified to like the phone company or gas or like, that they, they gotta do something now and they can't go back digging up a new road within five years or something?
The, the challenge working with the gas companies, they have, as I understand it, regulations that require them to respond during an emergency.
Yeah, right.
And that bar of what an emergency is has gotten lower and lower over the years.
Yeah.
So if there's a gas leak in the street, it could be the day after we pay, if they're gonna go out there and they're gonna dig up the street and fix the gas leak, unfortunately. That's why we're pushing them to make certain they identify as much as they can any problems upfront, but if there's a problem, we can't, and we don't want to keep them out of the street because, you know, dealing with a gas emergency is much... street because, you know, dealing with a gas emergency is much more important unfortunately than, than maintaining the, the paving.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Anything else for you? Okay. And the next?
The other item I believe that's on the agenda right now is just following up on an email that I'd sent to Mr. Bro regarding any surplus of vehicles that might be available to assist the DPW down the road. You may or may not be aware that we had received several years ago, two surplus vehicles from a police department, two sedans. They are both in very difficult shape, but this one, at this point, one of them is a 2000 Crown Victoria, it has 165 miles, 65,000 miles on it. We have done a fairly thorough inspection of it recently because of problems that we've had and we find that the frame is completely rotted out in several locations on that vehicle. We are not attempting to drive that vehicle any longer. We are using that vehicle essentially as spare parts for the second vehicle that we're continuing to drive. And that's a 2001 Crown Victoria with 145,000 miles on it. It has many mechanical and electrical issues that we deal with every day and at the moment we're dealing with them, but it's becoming more and more difficult to maintain that vehicle and, and get parts for that vehicle. So it, you know, it could be a week or it could be a year that we end up having to park that vehicle as well because we can no longer maintain it and keep it running. So we just wanted to, to speak up and say if an opportunity arises. This vehicle, just for your information, prior to my arrival, one vehicle had been used by the former superintendent, Mr. Gramasky. I, since I came on board, have not been using a town vehicle, I've been using my own vehicle. That's allowed me to then, as we lost one of these two vehicles, that allowed Bruce Fenny to utilize the second vehicle. Bruce, as you know, has lots of different projects going on concurrently around the town and having a way to travel around town is pretty important for Bruce. So he's driving the second vehicle now. And if we were able to receive a surplus vehicle, it would be a vehicle that he would then utilize. It wouldn't be a vehicle that I would be utilizing.
Oh, question. How, when did you receive them? And you might, I know it might be before your time, but just trying to get a little historical information.
I'm not certain of Mr. Federici or Bro have any estimate of when that might be been.
No. I, I know Mr. Gramasky had the blue car for quite a while, I think the whole time I've been on the board.
Okay.
So that's over five years. And the white, you know, the other car, your parts was the one that Bruce was driving before the white one?
Correct, yeah.
Did they approach you with the two police cars that they just auctioned off ahead of this? I mean, we just auctioned two cars off, we could've let you-
And it may have been essentially communication passing, you know, we, I believe this note we sent out, it became apparent to us about a week, week and a half ago that the white vehicle was on its last legs. And at that point, we put our hand up and that may have been after the auction was-
It was, it was.
Okay. All right.
If, and I don't want to drag this out any longer, if you'd like a quick update on the pool, the tennis court or the fire station, I can give you that as well.
That would be fabulous.
Okay.
Since you're here.
I don't want to, to take anybody's thunder, but I do want to report that the pool is in service, was put in service as I understand yesterday and is actively being used by the Recreation Department. So that project went very well and it was done on schedule, on budget.
It was on budget?
Absolutely, on budget, yep.
Okay.
The old fire station, that project has, was originally thought to be a roof repair project and based on further review, the problem was actually not the roof membrane, it was the, the parapet wall that the roof membrane attached to. So that project was repackaged as a masonry repair project. That project was put out to bid. Contract was awarded within, well into budget actually, and the work in that is scheduled to start July 7th. Again, we're telling everybody, stay away until July 7th.
Okay, so can you tell me how much that was?
I believe that was $16,000 and change against a-
It was 30, wasn't it?
I think it was 30,000, yeah.
And I will note that, you know, oftentimes a masonry repair, once you open things up and the contract was written that way, the ability to, if we find a problem, we have the ability to ask the contractor to fix that problem. That's the time, you know, we, we don't anticipate that the budget is going to be spent, but on the other hand, we would not be surprised if that $16,000 increases to some other number once we're actually able to open up. Because you can't see behind masonry. Once you open it up and see what's underneath it, you oftentimes find other issues.
Okay, so, so is the roof actually gonna be replaced at all?
No, the parapet wall, which was the problem. People looked at the inside of the, of the, the, the building and they saw water coming through the ceiling and they assumed that it was the roof that was the problem. In fact, it isn't the roof, it's the masonry and there are, while we're doing masonry repairs, there's a couple of other masonry issues. You might notice that there's a small sapling growing out of the side of the building. Part of the scope of the work here is to remove that and repair the masonry and repoint it. So it was an opportunity to get in there and anything that's masonry, masonry related while it's open, come in and make those repairs.
Are they gonna clean up around that bollomy before Fourth of July? The grass and the bushes? I mean, I was looking at that the other day.
I think, and others can jump in, whether that has historically been the JC's responsibility or, I'm not sure.
Not.
I'm not sure.
I'm not, I will-
Can we look into that, please? So we want our town looking sharp, you know, all the time, but especially during Fourth of July.
Correct, when we show it off.
Exactly.
And the last item, the tennis court project, bids were received, were awarded. I don't have the numbers with me, under budget, not significantly under budget, you know, it's gonna be a tight job to manage to keep that job on schedule and on budget. The, one of the items that, that the DPW is doing to help to reduce the cost of the project is doing all the fence-related demolition. So we're going to be starting that demolition work this week and next week now that school is out. And then the contractor is gonna be starting in earnest after July 7th again. So you'll see activity of our crews over the next number of days and then you're gonna see some heavier activity after that.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you about the fence, about you answering that question.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'll get back to us with regards to who's gonna take care of that outside of that building?
Correct.
That would be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Okay. Our next appointment is with our town accountant, Thomas Florence, and who is our clerk, treasurer, collector with regards to bonding. Our, you're those parties here. Okay. Will Tom Caliency be joining you?
I talked to him, he didn't know if he was, he was gonna try to make it. He said he knew the best he could to make it.
Welcome. We're talking about bonding, don't you think our accountant should be here?
The town accountant had previously expressed that when it comes to it, he was here at the last meeting to give the board the overview. Mr. Florence couldn't make it, but when it comes to this part of the process, it really is under the treasurer, so that the explanation should be coming from the treasurer.
Okay, and so then why was he on the agenda then?
Because he was originally going to be on the agenda and late midday, he indicated that he would not be able to make it.
Okay. Not okay, but we're moving on. Go ahead. Yes?
So what we have is a bond anticipation order ban. Went out to bid last week and got a very favorable rate, 1% coupon rate, which is tremendous. It's for the, a borrowing of the Pine Knoll Swimming Pool and of the Harkness Road Pump Station. So the total amount of borrowing is $1,181,082. And what we have, working with our financial advisor, with bond counsel, are final documents that need to be signed at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. And what I did is, there's, there's five separate sections of what needs to be signed and I made a copy and explanation of which each one of those sections are. Thanks, Billy. And this is, you know, just much like the past, we've six or seven borrowings since I've been here. And this is the standard procedure to finalize the process, to return the documents to the financial advisor and then the funds can be released to us. And this is the, the last part of the process. All the requirements went through bond counsel, isn't it? And I don't know if Tom had mentioned when I was away a couple of weeks ago, extensive analysis, what's, what's needed based on the borrowing, the vote at the town meeting when this was approved, to official statements, financial statements of the town. And what I also have here is a sheet from Standard and Poor's, which lists what our favorable rating is. And it cites the town's solid financial standing. Basically, it's low risk, we always pay the money back. I mean, so, you know, we have talked about it before with our bond, our bond upgrade, that the, a lot of the positive financial stability of the town gives us a lower rate to borrow. So we get a lower rate and less short-term interest to pay back. So that's on this, this rating sheet here. So with that, that being said, I don't know if you want to just go down, I know what we've done before is just start with the note and, and just go down and-
And there was no way to have supplied us with this information prior to this meeting and you're really expecting-
I just got it overnighted to me and I received it Monday. And I did, I made a copy for, forwarded this to Nick midday, Monday, right when I received it, this part, the summary part. The other stuff is the detailed analysis of the pages, the vote of the board, the signature litigation, tax certificate, and basically the work that's, that's done by bond counsel and our financial advisor on our behalf to solidify the borrowing of money for these two projects.
Okay, let me ask, any questions from you, Selectman Gorman?
Yes.
Does I have some as well?
For the bond rating, A, A+? The accounting department have anything to do with this to get that rated or just your department?
It's, it's a team effort from the financial advisor to the treasurers department, to the accountants department, absolutely. It's everyone together, the financial statements, the audits, the balance sheet, the ratios of long-term debt, the borrowing of that, free cash, stabilization funds, that all goes into, to that. And the accountant's office is a big part of that, yep.
So this was one of the lowest according to the paper, huh, that we've had in East Long Meadow?
Yeah, this is, you know, financial advisor said this is a historic low interest rate, which is again, a combination of two things, the bond market, as you know, Paul, is, that's just the economy now, the way the, the bond market is, coupled with the financial stability of the town. And what the rating agency liked about East Long Meadow is the strong financial statements and both the growth projection of the town as far as if it's a, you know, Bay Path to other projects coming in, to some subdivisions that we have out there, so that all factored into the favorable rate.
Tom, that delivery date on, on this paper right here?
Yeah.
That delivery date is 6:30?
Right.
So we gotta, we gotta move on it then?
Yeah, it's next Tuesday and it's, you know, excuse me, next Monday. And that's when the, the money will be wired into our bank account.
All right, thank you.
Slavich, Federici?
I'm really all set. I mean, this, you know, obviously, this is the hard work of everyone, you know, including appropriations, which, you know, I don't know if it's been mentioned, but obviously by keeping our free cash and stabilization at a certain amount, which allows us to get a favorable bond rate and as painful as it is during budget times, this is where you sort of see the rewards of, of all those efforts by everyone involved, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. It is a, you know, a team effort from a lot of people.
Okay, call me simple, but I thought the pool was gonna be paid with a certain fund. I didn't realize we were gonna have to borrow to do this.
It was a combination of two, there were CPA funds, $400,000 of CPA funds, we're gonna pay for the pool. The total project of the pool is $850,000. And it was agreed to at the town meeting that $400,000 would be financed with CPA funds and $450,000 would be done with general obligation bond funds.
That's why it's so important to go to town meeting.
That's correct. Right on.
All right, and so at this point where we're at now, we got a nice rate.
Yeah. Beautiful rate. You can do much better, whatever town you live in than that.
Okay. All right, so you were starting to go through your list of things that you've given us?
Yeah, exactly. The first part is the note itself and what that requires, and I've already done the town seal, requires a treasurer signature and then there's three lines. I don't know if you want to go up to the top, Chairman Morris, because you're-
I'd like to read this before I sign it, but I certainly won't pass it off.
Yeah, that was part of the package there, yeah.
Okay.
Well, thanks.
When you say it's part of the package, this is the first time I've seen this. Is that a typical?
Well, it wasn't our final due date.
Well, I didn't receive it, so.
Well, it's right there.
That's parade orders.
Right in the front, you got your hand right on the, the front page.
This?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about this.
Yeah.
Okay, apparently we're, we have separate, different packages. Okay.
That's the note. The second part, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, that's something that required only the clerk of the board to sign. What that does, it accepts and approves the terms of the borrowing. And the procedures, it asks for the clerk for the signature.
Chairman, I have a question for the clerk. Treasurer?
Go ahead.
The vote of the board, is there specific language that needs to be adopted? The board has not taken a vote.
There's not, no, any specific language. I think what's been done in the past is just a vote to approve. I think there's a, if there's language there, just to approve the terms of this borrowing.
I just recall, wouldn't there need to be something reflected that the board did take that vote?
Yeah, and that, that's included.
I suppose we could enter this.
As far as the, I don't know, Madam Chairman, if we wanna, if we have to, if this is representative of the vote of our board, we've got all these-
Conditions.
Conditions.
And I've seen this too, right?
No, that we just got yesterday.
You know what?
It was my decision, I, I didn't think you needed to see, you know, I was trying to make it, you know, 50, 60 pages of the documents. I just gave you the, the first part, which is the, you know, the summary part of the certificate.
You know what, I'll let you go ahead and, go ahead and finish your presentation. At some point, I think it would be wise to, at least to give Selectman Gorman and myself a chance to look over these documents and then we will proceed, whatever you need accordingly. But go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, well, the next part, again, going down this list, which is to get signatures.
Mm-hmm. And that's all you need?
At this point, yeah. And then the vote of the board, you know, for your favor.
And so we'll probably take that up after we-
Sure.
Take a little short recess and it'd give us a chance to look at those documents. And this needs to be done on the 30th? By the 30th, because our next meeting is until July 8th.
Yeah, according to this, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's been good to have it all signed tonight and then overnight it to the financial advisor tomorrow and then to wire the funds into our bank account for Monday.
Okay. All right.
Okay, the next part is the signature right here of the official statement certificate. It establishes the notes as valid obligations of the town and that the official statement properly represents the term of the loan of the town's finances, debt, tax base and management. the term of the loan of the town's finances, debt, tax base, and management. That is, the official statement is a 44-page document that explains, it recaps the financial snapshot of the town. And includes ratios, financial statements, corporations, town's largest taxpayers, for example, just a ton of financial information about the town.
All right, and the next one is?
Is the tax certificate. It's a certificate that establishes the tax-exempt nature of the notes and obligations of the town to take actions to maintain the notes as tax-exempt obligations on behalf of the note owners. So, basically, it shows that we are tax-exempt, and we don't have to pay taxes in the past. And there's four different copies there.
Okay, and the next one is?
The last one is the significant event certificate. And it's, you know, this is a basically a disclosure certificate that obligates the town to notify the market if certain events occur during the term of the notes, such as defaults, rating changes, late payments, et cetera, which has never happened, cannot foresee anything like that happening. But it is something that needs to be.
All right. So, that's what needs to be done.
Those are the five areas.
All right. Are you going to be around for a minute or two? It might take you a little bit.
Okay. Again, there's a lot that goes into borrowing the money. When I had a commitment at a conference two weeks ago, the assistant town accountant, Marshall, broke in. Tom Calhoun, the town accountant, did a very excellent job working together with me not being here to fulfill all the bond requirements, working with, as I told Paul, the team effort and brought all this together. That's put in front of you today.
All right, well, we thank you for your efforts. Certainly, I need to look at it and give Mr. Gorman a chance to also. We'll certainly try to get that done because he's going to want to tie it and put in the future.
Okay. Next one.
Next on our 7/14, which I believe were a little bit late appointment, Is it Serfino?
It is.
Okay, come on in.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming in today. This is Andrew.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, welcome.
Thanks.
And what can we do for you today?
Well, I've been here, this is my husband, Andrew, who does the camps with me.
Okay.
Whose both their names are on everything. Just wanted to, I guess, kind of keep you aware of the situation. We received an email this past week from somebody that went to the rec asking to sign up for a camp.
Okay.
And they just emailed us following up, so I have email for you. Basically, just wanted to keep you aware of the situation and hoping. It kind of alarmed us, and we didn't know if it had happened more than once. But we were just hoping to, I guess, with you, possibly sit down with them and kind of figure everything out once and for all.
Get everything out in the open, because there's lots of issues.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
The, what is the cycle? What happens? How do people sign up? Just so that I have it for your camp.
Well, we created a flyer, a flyer, and sent it to, got it approved by the superintendent, and sent it to the schools.
Okay.
And it says that they have to sign up on the rec website, but then I also put our emails for any questions.
Okay.
But you have to go through the rec website, onto the portal, and then find the page, and then find the name of the camp, and then register.
Okay, so, all the registrations are still going through the rec department?
They are. I will say that I've gotten a few saying, because the name of our camp that's on the flyer isn't what has been put up on the website. So, we've asked for it to be changed.
Okay, and what was, can I inquire?
What was the, we didn't get, there were two questions. They addressed my first question, but not the question about it being changed. So, I kind of reached the point of just saying, fill out the registration form and bring it to the first day of camp with your payment, because it's just been very back and forth. So, that's why we just wanted to kind of clear everything and just so we can get taken care of.
Okay. Selectman Gorman, any questions from you? I always go to my right, and forgive me.
No, I think we're going to have to look into this a little more.
I think so too. Okay, so, what we'll do is we'll set up a meeting rather quickly and with myself, the rec department, and you. Billy, are you going, you want to be active in this?
Yes.
Okay, so then, so it'll have to be a posted meeting?
I don't think we need all three of us there just to go over this.
I know, no, we don't, but I just want to give you the offer since it has to be a posted meeting. Okay, let's set that meeting and then work on getting this corrected, because this has long-reaching ramifications.
Sure, it would only be a matter of babysitting, so.
Okay, so it's, so...
We can arrange it rather easily.
Since it's going to be posted, it would have to be a couple of days.
Sure.
Okay?
It's fine, I'll find it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we postpone items five and six, please? Any objections to that?
No, you mean, you got five and six?
I got five and six.
The latest one, I think it was six and seven, you talking about the minutes?
Yeah, the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me. So, we're tabling those?
Oh, yeah, just for now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, where was the new one?
It was in front of you.
It was in front of me?
Try the one underneath there.
Ahah, I see, said the blind man. Okay, so, it would be six and seven that we're tabling. Six and seven, yeah, for now. Okay, the number eight, the Fourth of July, Fourth of July orders and maps. Before you, you have the parade orders. Unit one position would be, excuse me, unit one, position two is the board of selectmen. Who's position one?
I believe we're behind the fire departments.
Works for me. Okay, is this for us just, we don't need to approve this? We're just looking at it, correct? Okay, so that's just a notification. Wow. Okay, guys ready to walk? And I'm ready to ride. Have you decided what you're going to wear?
It's not going to be a skirt.
You can't wear a skirt, I thought we should wear skirts.
My Speedo.
You're going to wear a Speedo?
No, no, Speedo, Billy.
Well, that's how stuff gets started, okay. All right, so, let's go. Okay, there's, next is the board of selectmen scheduled, proposed scheduled meetings for July and August. Actually, he goes through, Nick has provided us through the end of the year. Certainly, it's always subject to change, but that's what it is for now. Are there any conflicts that you know of right now?
I don't have any right now.
Okay.
It's actually strange, usually we have a three meeting, either July or August. Normally, it's ended up being a three-meeting month, and we've always canceled one, but we don't have the next three-meeting month of September, so it worked out well for summertime purposes. Oh, you got the...
Yeah, interesting. Let me see those, Bill. Now, let me show you his.
We got more meetings than we do?
Yours is more readable.
Oh.
It's interesting, so we'll work on that. Ah, see, said the blind man. Okay, and the next is the veterans' picnic. What has happened is the regional veteran has council. Is that the correct name for them, the Veterans Council?
Veteran Service District.
Okay, Veteran Service District. Just has decided that they want to come to Isla Mado, which is really nice. And so, we don't have a date yet, but it's going to be coming, and we'll make sure that we advertise it and everything. And so, it'll be our regional, everybody from our region will be coming here. So, we're trying to work it out. It'd be nice to host them for a change. It's been held in Hampden before, and I think that was it so far, because it's a new thing, so it'll be nice to host it. So, it's nice to be appreciated. Town accountant position is number 11. Nick?
Madam Chairman, there's possibly two aspects of this, and I would suggest that the board consider part of it in executive session if the board's going to discuss possible candidates for interview as part of screening committee activities. But then if the board wanted to consider the first half of it, if you will, it could also be discussed in executive session under non-union negotiations. Strategy with respect to non-union negotiations.
Counsel?
A counsel may not have the benefit of this in front of him. This is under selectman business. Do you wish for me to...
I would like for him... Yeah, I think he should know.
I could give him just a brief update on it.
Play some music. I almost said play that, one of those Casey in the Sunshine Band tunes. Why don't you go ahead and go through the announcements?
I'll read really slow.
Read real slow.
Town offices are closed Friday, July 4th, 2014, in observance of Independence Day. The board of selectmen's meeting Tuesday, the next board of selectmen's meeting is Tuesday, July 8th, 2014, 6:00 p.m. in the town hall hearing room. Excuse me, have we too many recesses?
I think we might, because it looks like it's going to take a minute. But I'll entertain a motion for a short recess.
Someone?
Second?
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we're back in session. And we have our town council. He's been updated on the proposal, and so what would you think?
My understanding is that here is the possibility that the board may be entering into negotiations for a short-term limited contract for accounting services. And to that extent, that discussion of whether to entertain the proposal and what terms or conditions you might wish to offer, if that were going to also be considered, would be a proper subject for executive session for the purposes of non-union contract negotiations. Although the contract would be for a limited window, it still would be a contract negotiation, which you may...
Let me ask you, what's the difference between a contract and an agreement?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, all right. Just trying to save some money here. Okay, all right then, so that will be under executive session. While I have you here...
Yes.
We might as well...
Sound like my wife, no.
What else is going to be under, do you see anything else that would need to be under executives?
I, at this point, I don't know the specifics about items 32 and 30... 32 is specific, I don't know that. 33 and 34, I don't really have a lot of information about that. So, I don't believe, based on what I know, none of the items under old business with town council would be executive session.
Okay, is there any information, Nick, that council needs to be advised of for item 32, 33, and 34?
32 would be any ongoing matters that require updating?
Just a list of candidates for this list, correct?
Right.
The same candidates, right?
Yes.
But would be no real discussion on that, it's a list of candidates that we have.
Okay.
Item 33, to see if there's anything there regarding potential litigation or any settlements?
I do have litigation matters to discuss to bring up to board, update with respect to the directive that I was given at the last meeting with respect to a pending notice of claim. So, that would be executive.
Okay, 34?
I believe that is just the same letter that we had received from Maya back in May, looking for authority to move forward on a matter they were...
Okay, so that's just notification at this point?
It's just a follow-through, I don't think there's any new on that. And I forgot nothing more on that matter. And the others would be in session.
Madam Chair, was there a discussion under that town accountant, council? I don't know if I missed it. Was there discussion from council about the other part of it, other than the potential negotiations?
He said that it would be under executive, under non-union contract negotiations.
Okay, there was a part two to that.
The second part of that, I believe, dealt with the, I'm advised, dealt with responses to the request for candidates for the position for town accountant. And my suggestion would be that the board individually review the applications that you have from the candidates that have responded to determine two things. One, whether you're satisfied with the number of candidates that you have received, responses from, or applicants you receive responses from. And two, then, whether individually you're comfortable with the quality of the resumes and the information that you have. If your answer to either, to both of those is yes, then the next step would be to establish a screening committee to review the candidates, to make a recommendation to the board as to final candidates for consideration, or to determine whether the board itself wanted to hold interviews and make the final determination itself. But I would suggest that that vote not be made until you've had the opportunity to review the candidates to see what your own feelings with respect to the worth of the candidates that you have.
Okay, so, we had originally had the timeline for July 8th to start interviews, is that correct? Or soon thereafter?
Soon thereafter, the only deadline I remember off the top of my head is the June 23rd deadline for people to submit applications.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, now going on, oh, do we, okay. With regards to what Attorney Donahue has said, are we all in agreement that we're going to review them and then come back and look at that on our eve? Okay, all right, so we don't need to vote on that. The next thing is the boards and commissions reappointments, new appointments. There's one that's pressing. I would like to have the others, an opportunity to review the others if we could. The one that's pressing is with... The one that's pressing is with regards to the community, is it Community Preservation? No, Community Preservation one. Mr. Kingston is resigning. And he's making the recommendation of Thomas O'Brien. And Mr. Kingston would entertain us appointing him as Citizen at Large to fill the vacancy of Thomas O'Brien, so there's like a switch. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept that, that one.
Some move, is it both of them?
Yeah, both of those.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, so that's taken care of. All in favor? Aye. And if we could look at the others at our next meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. What happens also is my understanding that just because if we don't go through with the appointments today, all will stay as it is. And so...
Can I answer my question?
Okay. I will stay as it is, and then we can take this up on July 8th. All right, so the next item on our on our agenda is towing contracts. Nick?
This is a carryover item for the board to consider which companies that it wishes to award the towing contracts for FY '15.
Okay. Selectman Federici, is there any conversation that you'd like to have?
Not right now.
Not right now? Any discussion you'd like to have?
Well, we have two right now.
We have two right now, yes. And so, you can always have a third, yeah.
Yeah, there's a third one in Islam Meadow, and they're from Islam Meadow. And I think it should be a rotating thing. If it's working with two, it'll work with three. And one of them's in Islam Meadow.
Okay.
And I think we should consider the one in Islam Meadow also.
I heard you're grieving. Okay.
It's a good thing when I'm staff.
Yes.
No, I was just curious, as far as the one in Islam Meadow, I believe the gentleman's here. How many trucks do you have, if I may ask?
I have two that I could use.
Okay. Because that was one of the concerns, because I'd heard you had one. And obviously, if you have an accident with more than one car, then...
I have two trucks that are available to tow four cars at one time.
If I may say, just one moment, since the gentleman is speaking, do we have him identify which company he's representing?
Yeah, come on.
Why don't you come on up?
Well, we should...
Oh, well, I know, then we have, wait, wait, stay right there. I'm sorry. If we invite him up, do we, does that mean that, are we setting a precedent where we have to invite the remainers of the candidates up?
It's really in the discretion of the board who and what towing companies you decide to appoint. So, any information that you want to obtain is fine. I would submit, though, if you're going to ask specific questions of individual candidates to level the playing field, that at least the other candidates be notified that the board may wish to ask questions in making their decisions.
But through the board, this is the third dime that this gentleman's been here, the third dime.
What council is saying, well, I can say exactly what he's saying, is that if we're going to allow someone else to speak, and we're going to ask specific questions, then we should, but I think, if I may, sir, the questions that are to him are specific to his company.
And I think that's fine. And you could notify the other entities that if they wish to respond to the questions that were asked.
Okay.
They're free to do so.
All right. So, with that said, yes, I will entertain you coming up, sir.
Just to know, we do have another one of the carriers?
We do have another carrier, great.
Yeah.
Hi.
Thank you. So, the question was, Mr. Federici, identify yourself, please?
My name's Andrew Bordoni.
Okay.
And I own Pride Towing.
Pride Towing, okay.
And I can give a little background about myself and my company. And so, I'm here, I live in Islam Meadow. I've been here pretty much my whole life. My whole family's here in Islam Meadow. I'm a Marine Corps and combat veteran. When I came out of Marine Corps, I started a towing company here in Islam Meadow. So, I have a towing company that's in Islam Meadow. The yard that I'm going to be storing vehicles at is also here in Islam Meadow. And I've never had any discrepancies in any towing that I've ever had, that I've ever done for the services. And I put myself through a towing and recovery course, so I can do things properly, effectively, and safely. And I would just like to say, I'd like to appreciate, I would appreciate it if I could get on rotation for a week for a town of Islam Meadow. And if you guys were able to give me the opportunity to get on the rotation, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, you had some specific questions, just to repeat them for...
Yeah, actually, I do have two now. Obviously, you answered the first question as far as the number of trucks. And where is your storage yard in Islam Meadow?
347 Elm Street, Islam Meadow.
And is that a business?
It is.
And what's the name of the business?
Body Works Unlimited.
Can I ask specifically how many cars you could actually haul there?
I can haul four cars at once with the two trucks.
But how many?
Each truck carries two cars.
That wasn't my question, I apologize. Let me clarify. How many cars can you actually store there at 347 Elm Street?
It's between 50 and 60.
Between 50 and 60?
With inside and outside.
Selectman Gorman, any further questions?
No, other than, you know, I'm happy there's someone from Islam Meadow that has taken an interest, you know, in doing work out here.
Okay.
And I thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, thank you. Selectman Federici, okay, and who is the other gentleman who does, thank you very much? The other gentleman, please, because we believe in being fair.
My name is Masco.
Hi, Raj Masco. And what company are you with?
Mascaro Stolen.
Oh, Mascaro, okay.
I've been employed by the town for the last seven years. And there's been no complaints, as far as I know of, according to the chief. My one question is, I'm not disputing Andrew, but I believe he's using his own truck and another company's truck, which is family, I understand, but it's not his. It's not his business.
So, it's his own truck and...
One of the trucks is his, which is fine.
Yep.
The other one is not his. It'd be like me, I'm adequately supplied, I have eight vehicles, more than enough. Both four-wheel drive and heavy if I need them, without any problems. There hasn't been anything in the last seven years that I haven't been able to handle, that the town's calling me. From heavy down to four-wheel drives, burnt vehicles in the woods. I don't believe he has a four-wheel drive vehicle. I'm not disputing Andrew, Andrew's a good kid, but his vehicles are not both his.
So, if he weren't able to do it...
He'd have to call somebody else. But now he's putting himself into a predicament of, he's not qualified to do the job.
Can you say something about that?
That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Counsel, since something has been alleged...
Someone hasn't done their homework on that part of it, that's all I'm saying.
The other individual was here. If he can respond to it in a succinct fashion, I think it would make sense rather than just have an allegation without any response.
Okay, so we're going to allow him to respond to what you said? Would you like, but, fellas, we're not going to get...
No, there's no...
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying. I'm, I'm, I just, okay, come on, okay, all right, all right.
We've worked well together in the past.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't have any problems.
Okay, great.
Right, Andrew?
Absolutely.
All right, that's what I'm talking about.
The only thing I wanted to say was about, like, for instance, I get into a predicament that I couldn't do, like he said he has a four-wheel drive vehicle or something like that. Now, if for some reason, I'm sure a lot of things, a lot of that doesn't happen a lot, but if it were to happen, and I needed assistance, why couldn't I call on another towing company to help me out? I don't see why that would be a problem.
Another towing company that's already on the list?
Exactly, like Raj, if I have something that I needed assistance on or something, why, I don't see why it would be a problem if I could call him up and say, hey, I got this, what's going on? If you come down, send your truck, one of your trucks down here to give me assistance.
Any response?
No, I don't think there's a problem with that at all, because I know other towing companies that do that.
I'm going to go to Selectman Federici, and then I'll, or I can stake my case too.
Do whatever you like.
Okay. The only thing that I would think as a consumer, if there's a delay in service, that would cause more time to get the service to the person who is having the issue. That would be what my concern would be. So, as soon as somebody calls you, you would call them immediately? Or are you going out to the site and looking at it and saying, oh, this is too much for me?
Well, say, for instance, you were to give me, you were dispatched me the call, you would describe me the scenario, and I would instantly know whether I would need assistance with that call or not. Ninety percent of the time, I wouldn't need assistance, but if I did, I would just call, say, Raj, as soon as I got that dispatch call, he would send one of his trucks as I sent my truck, so we'd get there at the same time. So, virtually, there wouldn't really be a delay time.
That brings up other questions for me. Selectman Federici?
My only question or comment, if you will, is the whole idea of getting the, giving the contract out to a towing company is that they're able to provide full service. And if, in fact, this is the case where you would have to farm out, then, you know, nothing against the company, but if you've got to call him for a tow like that, then if we had him on to begin with, then we wouldn't have to worry about that. That's my only thought.
I do have one thing I could say about that. I know ninety percent of the time, I don't think that you would really need assistance for the tow. But I know for, in the past, you know, I've helped out other companies that would, that needed assistance also. And it wouldn't happen all the time, obviously, it would just be one of those things.
But I'd like to say something.
Just one minute? I promise I'll come right to you, it'll be less than a minute. How often do you have to use four-wheel drives?
Whenever there's a burnt car, middle of winter, you tell me.
No, I'm asking you, I'm asking for data from you.
Oh, for data. Probably last year.
Last year?
Fifteen times.
Fifteen times out of...
Out of maybe 150, 160 calls.
Okay.
Ten percent.
To Islam Meadow?
All Islam, only.
150 calls? Okay, that's another question, okay, sure, Selectman.
Well, when I worked for the phone company, we had a line truck tipped over, and a company sent out a vehicle, which they found out was too small to tip the truck back up, and they had to call other companies to assist them.
Okay.
So, it doesn't happen that often, but, I don't know, too many towing companies have four-wheel drives to do that.
Quite a few of them, quite a few of them.
I don't know too many.
You get a burnt car in the middle of the woods, how you going to get it?
No. How often is that?
Okay.
How often? I had three last year. You can check with the fire department.
Okay. We've gotten, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I pretty much said everything.
Okay, anything you'd like to add? Okay. To my board, is there any more information that we'd like to collect on this matter?
The only thing I'm thinking is, since we've, and I'll do this through council, since we've talked to two of the candidates, should we give the other ones an opportunity? Yeah, now that we've asked questions of...
CJ, excuse me, CJ's is the only other one, and there's no problem with any of our issues here, whether it be a heavy truck, four-wheel drive, they have four-wheel drives also.
Okay, I appreciate what you said, but the thing is, and what's the process, and since we have opened it up to them, to you, they may choose not to have anything to say, but we do need to afford them the ability to say it, since we have listened to you. So, I appreciate what you have, you know, coming today, and we wanted to hear what you had to say, and so now...
I got one more question.
Okay, you can ask your question, but wait a minute.
You told him Springfield?
The board has all the information, everything's legit, the storage facility, up to 40 cars, no problem. Inside and outside as well.
Okay, we're done with this.
My question is, the contract supposed to be awarded for the 8th? Are we going to meet again before this?
Actually, we meet on the 8th.
We meet on the 8th.
Mm-hmm.
No problem.
Okay, we're all done. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yep.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Question for the board. Would the board want to consider allowing for the contract to be extended to July 9th to cover the 8th, so that there's no ambiguity?
How does the board feel on that?
What do you want to do, Nick?
To change it to the...
9th?
To the 9th, to extend the contract one extra day, so that, one more meeting on the 8th.
So, you're not towing cars with your dump truck on the 8th?
Mr. Federici, Selectman Federici, how do you feel about that?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to extend the contract until the 9th, pending our our resolution on our meeting on July 8th.
Some move.
And second? Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. In light of the additional information that we received today, item 14 will be carried over. Item 15, because of item 14 being carried over, item 15, I would make a motion to continue with the recreation temporary health.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Cable franchise renewal report on the hearing. On the 19th, we had a hearing that was well-attended by 32 people. There were several issues that did come out of it. I felt like, okay, I did tape it, Mr. Cohen was very receptive and received quite a few questions and a little hot seat. We have more information that we need to go into because of some of the questions that did arise during that conversation, let me call it that. Is there something else you would like to add to that, Nick, you were there?
Well, I think it was a well-run meeting, and I think you allowed, running the meeting, I think you allowed for people to be able to have their say. And I think Mr. Cohen on the hot seat did a pretty fine job.
See, I didn't call it a hot seat, but it was certainly, it was certainly warm.
And the only other thing I would add is what we, the committee was promoting that evening is that there will be another hearing in September.
Yep, on September 18th is one in the evening. And there looks to be that there will be one in the daytime, time to be announced. And Mr. Cohen, Cohen, who is the, our charter cable representative, will be there at the one in the daytime again. So, if you have an opportunity to be there, you can ask your questions about the cable that we have and things that are changing and just fun stuff, fun stuff. The proposal, that Form 394, if you had a chance to look it over, I certainly have questions. I guess we need to go into the fact that there is a proposal of, who's buying? Comcast is purchasing...
Time Warner.
Time Warner. And if that is approved, then we will no longer have Charter Cable. We will then have Comcast Cable. So, that's why it's important that you attend one of these hearings. Some people are yes, and some people are like, no. So, we're in negotiations, and we're truly negotiating this time around, and there are a lot of variables. But Nick, if you want to talk about that Form 394, the restructuring proposal?
Sure. Just in brief, to the board, this was a notice sent from Comcast to the board as the issuing authority that this deal with Time Warner, with Comcast purchase of Time Warner is pending. And in summary, what this is...
And, uh, in summary, what this is Form three ninety-four, it's a notification to the board about the deal and also to let the board know that during this interim period, before the deal is executed, that Comcast will own Charter Communications as a wholly-owned indirect subsidiary, I believe is the term means. What they're asking the board is, does the board first believe that it has the authority to consent to that arrangement in the interim? And if the board doesn't think that it has that consent, or if the board is indifferent to that consent, then there is a resolution that the company is asking for the board to sign and send back to them. If the board believes that it needs to give, it's, it has that authority to give consent and that it wants to consider whether or not to give that consent, it has one hundred and twenty days from the receipt of the letter. So probably about a hundred and ten days or something like that at this point to consider that matter and provide the document back or not to Comcast. And, and beyond that, what the ramifications are, if the board doesn't offer that consent within the hundred and twenty days, I, I really haven't had an opportunity to dig into that or speak with council.
Certainly, we would want council to look over that, um, that document because it certainly has a lot of twists and turns in it. And I'm not sure if we are even the ones that would be making that recommendation. It's, it's, yeah.
Is there any information on that at this point to give you an answer to that, Madam?
Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll, we'll table that until council has an opportunity to look at it. Nick, can you make sure that council gets those documents? I know it's been tabled, but did you have a chance to look at it? Is there anything you wanted to add to that, sir?
No.
Or do you want, okay. And, okay. All right. So we'll table that until, and we'll come back to it at another time. We have a hundred and ten days.
Hundred and ten?
About a hundred and ten, yeah. Yes.
Perhaps this would be an opportunity to bring up an LCAP meeting? Or do you want to table that?
We do need to set an LCAP meeting. But let me get with, um, Mr. Mackey and make sure that that's, uh, that, that we're setting it where he gets an opportunity. That'll be within the last, in the, within the next week and a half that we'll do that. And we'll make sure that it's posted, as we normally do. Do you have a date in mind?
Well, I, I think we, we just had a very preliminary discussion about a, a date. But one, one conversation I...
And you say we?
You and I this afternoon.
Okay. Just making sure it was the right one?
Yes. With regards to that, we did discuss a tentative date. But I have, in between that conversation and tonight's meeting, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Mackey, just saying, you know, we're looking to...
Right.
We had that discussion.
Sure.
One of the things is there, and, and I didn't mention during our conversation, is that, um, at this, at this time, Mr. Selectman Gorman is liaison for LCAP. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, so that he isn't, he's, he's hearing the opportunity now about a meeting. So I would need to, uh, bring, uh, Selectman Gorman into dates and times and so forth for a meeting.
So what date did you have in mind?
Well, I think you had brought up, uh, looking at next Tuesday, the first, at ten o'clock.
Does that work for you, Selectman Gorman?
Tuesday at ten?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, uh, July first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
At ten? Okay. So then that's it?
What date would that be?
July first.
And it's not confirmed yet, but it may be at the LCAP studio.
Where would that be, Nick? At the LCAP?
At the LC, yeah.
Tentatively at the LCAP.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. All right. Then, next. The police interviews, questions to be asked?
Madam Chairman, this is here because the board, it's anticipated, will be interviewing police candidates at the July eighth meeting. And the question is to the board, what is the procedure going to be to determine what questions will be asked and the order to ask them?
But we've decided that, um, the questions won't be at the July eighth. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My error. Okay. So do we want to form our own questions? Or do we want to go with what's recommended and...
I'd, I'd like to, uh, form our own questions.
Okay.
Okay. I, I, if we get, and if we get them recommended from the police department or from whoever, they know better what to ask about the position than I do for the most part. So I'd rather have them...
So, so a combo?
Yeah.
All right. So you're gonna do your own, or you want to look, you want to look at, see what he's gonna present? And then have the opportunity to create your own, if you like?
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Madam Chairman?
That's gonna be at January eighth, though?
No, July eighth.
I mean, July eighth.
The question I have then is for practical purposes, will the questions be coming in such that, would the board want me to put up a questionnaire sheet, so that everybody's asking them again in the same order? And how are the, uh, final determinations about what is going to be asked to be made?
I guess it would have to be determined prior, um, right before the meeting. If you can get those out to us and within the next couple of days, and people will give you back the feedback of which ones they want to ask, if they want to ask those or get, and/or give you their, um, questions that are developed. So we'll know by, and then have them all printed up. And then when you come to the meeting, we'll all decide which ones we're gonna ask. With preference of the person who creates a question, they should have the opportunity to ask that question. Number eighteen, I'm gonna table that until we can get further investigations with regards to that. Number nineteen is a request for the Masonic Temple, one-day license, beer and wine, for Saturday, July fifth, and Saturday, July twelfth. From six PM to twelve PM, they're also asking for an entertainment license on the same date and times at the Masonic Hall at forty-three Chestnut Street in conjunction with a birthday party. Insurance is on file. I'll entertain that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's also a request for a block party on Redden Drive, blocking off portion of Redden Drive, house number two to house number eight, and all of Redden Lane on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, um, from three PM to eight PM. Recommendations have been made by the fire, uh, fire police and DPW. I'll entertain a motion to accept those recommendations, um, as well, as well as allowing the block party.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion?
Yes, one question.
Sure.
Does that include Bobby Adams's house?
I don't know where Bobby Adams lives.
Okay.
Okay.
Just seeing if you're awake back there.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all of, is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next is, um, there's a request from our congressman, Richard Neal, uh, for artwork from East Long Meadow. When, when does he exactly need that again?
There's no, well, excuse me, sorry. It says no hurry on this letter.
Right. But is there, do you have a feel for a date?
There's no rush of team this artwork.
Right. But I'm asking, Nick, if he has a feel for a date?
Nope. They, there is no rush, there is no urgent, urgency to it.
Okay.
I do not have a feel for a date.
Okay. So if anybody has any artwork that represents East Long Meadow, um, notify, um, one of your selectmen or, uh, Mr. Bro, and we'll try to make sure that we get something to our congressman that represents East Long Meadow. Okay. Moving on, um, there's an invitation from the chat, fire chief for the graduation exercise for, uh, Chris Beecher on Friday, Jul, that should've went in announcements, on July eighteenth, uh, one-thirty. And that's at the Mass Firefighter Academy, One State Street in Stowe, Mass. I'd like to attend. Anybody else want to go also?
July eighteenth, one-thirty?
Mm-hmm. Can you check your calendars? And maybe we can all write up together?
Where would that be?
In Stowe, Mass.
Stowe, Mass?
How far is Stowe? About an hour?
Hour forty-five.
It's about an hour away.
I think it's, yeah.
Okay. So may, you know, just mark your calendars and maybe we can all just get together and go for that.
Madam Chairman, will the, if I could ask, will the board then RSVP directly to the chief?
You can RSVP for me right now, um, and, uh, Selectman Federicii will check and get back to you, Nick. And what do you want to, you gonna go?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay. So, and, um, Selectman Gorman's going. So we, we all may be going, uh, with regards to that. Okay. You're up.
We got, uh, for approval for food service permits for the JC Carnival. The application was approved by Lori McCool, our health agent. I'll skip down to twenty-one.
The food service permit, we have to vote on this. You just, you entertain a motion to approve the food permits.
Okay. Yeah, uh, wanna take a motion?
Mm-hmm. You entertain a motion to approve the, um, food, uh, service permits?
Food service permits for JC's Carnival?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that passes. You're all set? Okay. And the next one is with regards to...
Okay. And that one's for the health agent.
Okay.
We got a little problem keeping health agents in East Long Meadow. And the health agent we have right now, Lori McCool, her last day, I believe, is the third, Nick?
That's what she said.
So we're gonna have to entertain advertise and for another health agent. And the reason I get from the last two or three that we've had is because the pay is not enough and the hours aren't enough. And they can't make a living off what we're paying them. So I came up with proposal for the health agent, uh, for nineteen-hour work week, which it's now ten, and twenty, and twenty-two dollars an hour, which is mediocre in between what we were paying. And, uh, Nick was gonna find out if we could afford that. Which, did you, Nick?
I've, uh, provided the board with a memo that includes, the short answer is yes. I've provided the board with a memo that I think, um, gives some detail to base a decision on, uh, based on those numbers. The only thing I didn't include with, when I did the calculations for yours, your proposal at twenty-two, was I didn't remember if you had had something in there for mileage. So I didn't put that in there. But there's another calculation that does have mileage in there for what it was for Mr. Cole. So based on that amount or less, um, or more, you get, you could figure out.
For the last two, through the chair? For the last two, um, agents, um, have we provided mileage?
Provide, no.
No.
No mileage.
Okay.
No benefits.
Mm-hmm.
And, um... The, the salary for Mr. Cole, you know, this is about the same for the certifications these people need. You know, what we're paying them just isn't hitting it because twenty-two years ago, like one lady explained, she was, uh, getting paid fifteen dollars an hour, going for her certifications. Now they got their certification and most of them want to get paid between twenty-five and thirty. I figure twenty-two's a mediocre price where we probably could keep someone in East Long Meadow. Because we have many services, uh, you know, stopping shops, um, all these food vendors. And we got the, the Fourth of July thing here. I mean, we need someone permanent here that can, that we can depend on because right now it's hit or miss.
Okay.
And, um, just this past weekend, we had a fire over at the Starbucks. And they had to call me to go down there because they couldn't get a hold of the lady. So me and the fire chief went down there. And we had to close it down temporarily. So, but we, we definitely need someone here permanent. And we gotta make it so they can at least make some type of living.
Okay.
And that, that is with no mileage and no benefits.
Okay. So you're going from ten hours to nineteen hours?
Right.
Is it possible that you could start off with fifteen hours with an increase of, of the pay and see how it goes? Because we had, keep in mind, we had somebody there that was doing it for ten hours at fifteen dollars an hour. And I understand what you're saying.
But that was, uh, how long, how many, how many, uh, health agents ago? Three?
No, two.
Mr. Cole, right?
No. This is, this is Amy Potowski.
Yeah, but she left us.
Yeah.
For another job. Because she said the money wasn't enough. I have a letter from her.
Yeah, but this is supposed to be a part-time position.
Yeah, I know, but...
That's how it was designed.
But nineteen hours a week is still a part-time position.
Nineteen hours a week would kick you into possibly having to make it a union position as well, when it's been covered in ten hours.
Is our health agent union? They're not union, huh?
No.
Because they're ten hours.
No, I thought we had to keep it under twenty, huh, Nick?
No. It's nineteen.
Nick?
The health, the health agent is not a recognized position with the, within the union, within the town employees' union.
Well, alls I can say is, I, I think the board's putting me in position because I'm the liaison. And we're in deep trouble right now because we're not doing what we're supposed to do with the health agent. We're supposed to be inspecting schools every two years. We're these, uh, Eaton establishments every two years, and we haven't done this. We could be in trouble if we don't get moving on some of this stuff. So we gotta come up with a decision tonight.
So you're saying with, with the former health agent, that the inspections weren't being done?
The inspections haven't, haven't been done since Mr. Cole and, and any of the establishments.
I'm not sure if that's the fact.
I'm positive. So we get, we gotta make a decision tonight on what we're gonna do.
I can meet you halfway with fifteen hours, um, and then the increase of twenty-two hours and then to come back and visit.
The thing is, Angela, I can't keep going through this. I, I shouldn't have to be going out on these. I'm only the liaison.
Right.
Those people got the credentials to go out.
Right.
To learn what to do. We can't keep people. We can't even get them to come sometimes. There are hours, first we started in the morning they were coming, now they can't come in the morning, now they can only come in the afternoon. And now we can barely get them in the afternoon to come. It's just not, there's not enough hours, not enough money for these people. I mean, I go out with them, I see what they have to do. And then I leave and I stir in here doing paperwork for two, three hours after. It's, it's just total impossible what the town of East Long Meadows offers them. All these other towns are keeping them because like, the town of, say, uh, Amlin, they get, All these other towns are keeping them because like, the town of, say, uh, Amlin, they get, they, they do those, the Title Fives. They're making more money than here because they give them eighty percent of the Title Fives there. We don't, we don't have hardly any Title Fives there to speak of.
I don't think we have.
Very few.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we gotta do something different than what they're doing to offer them money to stay here. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, so do you...
You know, we're, we're in a different position in East Long Meadow.
So do you think that it's gonna take nineteen hours every week to, to meet our needs? When, I, I just don't see the big difference between the ten hours every week and there were some times when there was nothing to do and there was a stipend that was actually given every week, and there were some times there was nothing to do.
Well, the only reason, Angela, there's nothing to do is because they weren't doing what they're supposed to be doing because they didn't have the time because they had to go back to the town they came from, or the ones they're responsible for. I mean, cause one lady was serving three towns and East Long Meadow was strictly a fill-in.
Yeah, that was a temporary.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, the only person that I would be able to go back to is Amy Potowski. So she was doing the position and she got rave reviews from...
Yeah, but I don't know what Amy, I wasn't here then, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can only speak of what's going on right now, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I gotta tell you...
And so I guess what I'm asking is, what do you have that will, that justifies going from a ten-hour position to a nineteen-hour position?
Doing the job the way we're supposed to and going to these schools, going to these business, these Eaton establishments, and doing what we're supposed to, because I have people telling me some of these Eaton establishments are horrendous.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I, you go in there and they haven't been, uh, looked into in a couple of years.
Okay, so how would it be?
They're supposed to be looking, every two years, they're supposed to be going around. And, you know, in East Long Meadow, we have a lot of Eaton establishments compared to a lot of other, other towns, you know? But, you know, you get an epidemic where, you know, you get bad meat and people get sick or at the carnival, you get a ration. I remember at the carnival one time we had a problem there. And, you know, I don't wanna be the liaison for not doing my job because we couldn't get a health agent in there, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So we, we gotta do something tonight. We gotta come up with some, a vote tonight on what we're gonna do. Whatever you guys prefer, you know? What do you think, Paul?
It's, oh, yeah.
Um, obviously, we're in a tough situation. Uh, we had, we really had it made when Fred was here. And I was just trying to ask Nick how many hours Fred worked, and he said whatever it took, so that we don't really have a, a definitive, uh, figure. But I'd hate to see, like, when's she gonna leaving, the third?
Third.
Yeah, so if we wait till the next meeting, then we're gonna be, we may be stuck with, you know, if we have, if we have issues or we have, you know, something going on, especially considering the carnival runs till the third.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I noticed in Nick's, Nick's review here that there's actually money in the, in the budget, it looks like, if I read this right. Um, there was a surplus, so even with the increase in salary, there's still a surplus.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I guess is what I'm saying. Um, so at least we know we have the coverage and, um...
Does it have to go to nineteen hours?
Yeah, that's the thing is...
Is my question. I, I think we could at least in, increase to fifteen and see how it goes. And then if we have to increase it to nineteen hours, we don't have any documentation as to exactly how many hours it would really take to, uh, do this position, which is supposed to be a ten, if it needs to be, um, a full-time or increased hour position and it's documented and it's proven, I'm all for it. But I just don't wanna do it just because. But I certainly agree with you that, yes, raising the, um, salary would, would bring a better bu, um, bunch for you. So we're talking about four hours here. Um, for fifteen hours at the twenty-two dollars. And then you could go ahead and, um, make your, um...
Well, if someone, this is my proposal here. If someone wants to do something different, make a proposal, that's all.
Okay, um, well, okay, so you, you, okay, I would make a motion. Um, I would ask for a motion of fifteen hours a week, um, at twenty-two dollars an hour, um, with the, um, provision that we can revisit it to see if that's enough hours for that position.
And you're gonna advertise it at that?
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah. So it needs to be seconded, I guess?
Who, who made the motion?
I, I made the motion to... That's my motion. Are you accepting that motion?
No, I'm not.
Okay, you're not. Okay, so then we can't move it. Then we're back, right back where we started.
I could move it, it's just you.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to think of a way, well, I'll move it and then we'll, we have discussion.
Okay.
So move.
It's moved, okay, and then... So I guess I'm seconding it? That doesn't make any sense.
You made the motion, Angela.
I made the motion, okay.
She made the motion, right?
Okay.
I, I...
Okay, seconded.
All right.
So now, discussion?
Um, if I may, through the, through the chair, I think what we should do is, is not, I mean, I, I'm thinking of a couple of things here. We, obviously with the nineteen hours, we may get a better candidate because they're gonna be making more money and they might be more willing. If we start with a fifteen, we, we'll probably wanna set from, from day one, figure out what this person's doing, you know, obviously, keep, get, have a log of what they're doing because if we realize in short order that the nineteen hours is actually gonna be just barely enough, you know, we may realize...
Or the fifteen hours is what we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, then, then we can, we can plan accordingly. You know, I just don't wanna see it, do the fifteen and then stretch it out for a long time and still not be able to get the job done. So, we could set a short period of time to, to basically shadow the position and see, you know, see what's actually, uh, what it takes to do the job correctly because up till now, for the last couple of years, since Fred left, we've been, we've been doing like this catch-as-catch-can thing. So we're, we're like, we're plugging leaks instead of, you know...
Instead of, yeah, putting Band-Aids on.
Yeah, instead of...
Instead of correcting problems, I agree.
Correcting things before they leak, so, um, that's my only concern is that, you know...
What I'm trying to do, Paul, is draw someone in that wants to stay here.
Yeah.
Because right now, nobody wants to stay here.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting something else because they know they can't live there.
And that may be something to explain to them is, if you get the candidates and if you say, if you interview them, say, "We're starting this as a fifteen-hour position, but we, we're, we know that it may be, uh, we can go up to nineteen hours," which is sort of a, sometimes you say that to people and they'll deliberately drag their feet to get to nineteen hours. But hopefully, if you have a good sense of who the person is, you know, explain to them that we're trying to get this job done. We're trying to get it done as reasonably as we can cost-wise, but we know to get somebody good, we have to go out there and, and, you know, pay the money and, and in theory, we don't know how many hours it's gonna take to do the job correctly.
Yeah, and through the chair, um, if the logs, the logs should be a great indicator as to what really needs to be done and we're already shadowing them out there anyway, so that would just be more information. Okay. Okay, so...
So make your motion.
I do. So now you move, have a vote. So all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes, so...
Um, the other question I wanna ask you, where are we gonna advertise this? Because we're gonna have to jump on this because she's leaving the third.
Through the chair, I would suggest that you go through the reminder and the, uh, Republican and, as well as letting, um, the Board of Health, Charlie, uh, I can't think of his last name, Charlie Kinnicky, let him know. And, cause he has, um, connections all over the state, and have it sent out that way as well.
How soon could we get that out, Nick?
An ad could be placed in the Republican, probably, um, Thursday or Friday. Um, an ad for the reminder unfortunately wouldn't be in there until the following Thursday. Um, I would wanna know, I, I'm assuming that the board wants to have the deadline probably July seventh.
July seventh?
Well, your next meet on the eighth.
And Lori will be gone on the third, so...
Yeah.
Unless we call a meeting.
That's gonna be tougher on the fourth of July.
It is on the fourth, yeah.
That's what I say.
If I made through the chair, if Ben was nice enough to write a, write a story about this, it would save us the advertising cost. People would know, right?
He gave, he gave the silent nod, yeah.
See, the Paul's point though, Nick, you know, the, it's gonna be tough fourth of July weekend, you know?
Um, understood, um, as chairman, I, I'm looking for direction from the board. The thing is, um, if the board wants to take a little bit more time to do it and then consider also, uh, how you wanna go about the interview process, that, you know, certainly the board could do that. Then your next meeting is July twenty-second, so...
Could we, could we hold a special meet for that, just for that?
We might, the only thing that, through the chair, I'm sorry, through, uh, the only thing that bothers me is that from the third to the twenty-second, that timeframe where if we're, I don't know if another town would help cover, you know, if they've got somebody who, that's something maybe to find out. Is if we knew that another town's health agent might cover for two weeks for us, just to, you know, cause we're in a bind, then that would sort of alleviate the pressure, but if not, then we're gonna be sitting here with twenty, you know, nineteen days with nobody, um...
See, the, the bad thing with that, Paul, we ask other people, uh, help us and they tell us to bomb there, I, I just can't take anymore. I mean, that's what happened with this last lady here, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, she, she was more than willing to help us, but now she's, it's just beyond her...
Do you think that it would change because of the increase in the amount of money?
Yeah, I know.
You think it would change to deposit?
Yes, I do.
That she would do it?
Oh, not her.
Not her, but somebody else?
Yes, I, I do, Angela, you know?
So, so maybe you won't have, maybe you'll get somebody that's willing to fill in until the twenty-second at least and maybe even get a candidate out of it. Okay, so...
All right, Nick, why don't we do that, then?
Uh, when does the board want the deadline for this, for this ad, then? When do you want applications?
Would you say the seventh?
Well, if the, if the board wanted to consider the applications on the eighth, I mean, um, the reminder wouldn't be in the reminder until the third of July. Being the Republican, like I said, probably before Friday, um, Thursday or Friday, anyway.
Well, if it's the third of July, that gives us, um, it's four days until the seventh.
With the problem being that, well, I suppose they could get it in by the seventh, that's right.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be in on, uh, Thursday, the third. And then, at the same time, we were gonna try to, if, if I understand this correctly, we're gonna try to see if somebody can cover, uh, at that, at that higher rate, yeah. Um, at least until the twenty-second. Is that what you had said, Nick?
Well, I heard the selectmen, I heard conversations between the selectmen about trying to see if other towns could, uh, if agents in other towns might cover, um, during the interim of the third or the, through the twenty-second or whatever the date happens to be.
Right.
Um, if, if that goes that way, then so be it, that'd be beneficial to the town. My question to the board is, for the search itself, fifteen hours, twenty-two dollars an hour, what does the, um, deadline look like? What does the interview process look like, just for planning?
I would say, well, go ahead, sir.
Do you have a camera, do it?
Yeah. So if it ends here, it'll be in the paper on that date. So if we end it either on these days, we meet on this day, so if we end that day.
Yeah, if it ends this day.
Right.
And probably the seventh of July, Nick.
So then...
The end date?
To get the, the applications in on the seventh, the board would have applications to consider on the eighth.
Eighth, yeah.
And then would the board, I, I, I don't know, would the board be looking to schedule the interviews? Or what does the board want to do for the selection? Let's say you have five candidates to take a look at on the seventh, on the eighth, I hope. Uh, what, what does the board, how does the board wanna go about selecting?
Through the chair, we could always call a special meeting if we had to, somewhere, somewhere between the eighth and the twenty-second, you know? For that sole topic and, you know...
Right, agree.
So, anyway, do we wanna do it on which date?
If we were to have to have a special meeting?
Yeah, if we had a special...
Our meeting is regularly on the eighth.
Yeah, on the eighth.
And so if we had to...
For the interviews.
If you were to have to call a special meeting, oh, boy, it would have to be either one of these two days because I am done, then, um...
About the fourteenth?
Are you, you have vacation, Paul? Are you going away yet, by any chance?
Uh, nothing, nothing, nothing of any distance.
Okay, all right, so, so the fourteenth or the fifteenth?
Fourteenth to fifteenth, yeah.
Fourteenth is a Monday?
Monday.
Fifteenth probably better.
Okay.
Just in case.
Okay, Nick?
Okay. Okay.
I would ask that, um, you would have that in the daytime?
Yeah.
Please, um...
Depending, I... You make it in the morning?
I can make it in the morning, hopefully our candidates can, depending on what they're doing for a living.
Then they won't be the one, really.
That's true.
Hmm.
Availability is...
Yeah, that's fine.
Ten o'clock on the fifteenth, Nick?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
And hopefully, that'll be, you know, candidates for the board to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I think we're at number twenty-eight, uh, Selectman? Chair?
Oh, yeah, it's actually good.
We've been down twenty-seven, six to five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Jesus, Lord have mercy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was twenty-four, so we're at twenty-five.
Yeah, Green Lawn Cemetery?
I haven't had a chance to really review that. I would ask for one more time on that.
Well, yeah, I, I looked, I looked up that.
Mm-hmm.
It's all, I mean, it's, he owned the land, he saw it cleared and everything.
I would ask for one more time. I would just ask for more time on that one, if, if you don't mind, through the chair.
Are we up to twenty-six?
Yeah, we're on twenty-five right now. And so I guess we're going to twenty-six. The, the cards?
I don't know, nothing about recycle cards.
Just, um, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Oh, nice, eh? That's all on us?
Mm-hmm.
Just, uh, wanted to let the board know that they would put, these are annual cards that are sent out to everybody. Hopefully, they're familiar to the board members. Um, they just have the recycling schedule, the trash schedule for the week, for the year, starting July one through, uh, next June thirtieth of twenty-fifteen. If people didn't get them in the mail, uh, contact the office, uh, we can send, send one out or they could come by and get one. They're also on the website.
Okay.
They're usually sent out in your, um, through the reminder, huh? That's right, yeah.
These are, uh, usually sent directly in the mail, uh, to every household.
Have we got this in the office now or because it?
We have.
The other ones were outdated when I went to give someone one.
We have, uh, plenty of the new ones now, yes.
All right.
Let me read the rest, then.
You are at number twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
I'm ready this time.
Yeah, uh, pool, swimming pool permit for Pine Knoll, application approved by Lori McCool.
Okay. You'll entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion on that?
To approve it, um, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
No. All in favor?
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, I'll get that down there.
No, you will.
Request from, uh, Arbor Kids Daycare Center, one twenty-six Industrial Avenue, Amy Kimball.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's a pool permit?
Uh, yeah, that was, yeah, approval of swimming pool permit.
Mm-hmm.
And application inspection of the swimming pool approved by Lori McCool, health agent.
Okay. You'll entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Lori's been busy.
Yeah, she has. That's why she's leaving.
It ain't busy. Uh, request from Marine Sweet Shop, temporary food service permit, Friday, July fourth, two thousand fourteen, eight AM to two o'clock PM, Fourth of July parade, pending approval from Lori McCool, health agent. I don't know if she went out and checked that.
Okay.
Uh, so moved.
It was on her approval.
Are we gonna detour in there or we'll go through it?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Uh, so moved.
You moved it? I'll, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just making sure that it's pending the approval of Lori McCool, so she'll go out there. Once she approves it, sure. That's all.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, there...
Do you know if she went out and approved that?
She hasn't approved it yet, but, um, we, we, uh, just voted on approving it.
Cause we're, yeah.
Pending her approval. Okay, so we have a correspondence from MMA? Nick?
This is, uh, letting the board know about, uh, pending, uh, bills in the legislature regarding wireless antennas and changes that the industry is proposing to make. And the MMA is urging, um, local government to support opposition to those changes. And there's details in the correspondence that you have.
Okay, um, Town Council?
Okay, before we go, that's enough for tonight.
You wouldn't let us shake your hand last night?
Okay, um, thirty-one, correspondence from the police chief?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I tell you, the first one is just, um, a notice from the chief regarding, um, when the next academies for police candidates are available. He's giving you a sheet as to what he understands to be the scheduling. Um, so that will fit in once, to become applicable, really, once you, you go through the civil service list for, uh, for the appointments to the positions. Um, and I believe the civil service list is just a, um, that matter refers to a prior first notice from the chief that's really sort of resolved itself. Uh, I, I do not know what is meant by the R E C C application. I apologize for that, but I don't know what it is.
Madam Chairman, that is, uh, the board had wanted to see the application for the regional emergency dispatch that the, the town had sent in as part of a joint application with other communities this spring. Hard copies in E files were provided to the board for your information.
And see, the civil service?
All right. Item thirty-two, I believe that was addressed earlier.
The civil service, were, list? Um, I know there was a request. And we're still going with the same?
Same list.
Absolutely.
It's the same list. We've already had that discussion. I'm not aware of any updated position on the, uh, item thirty-two. I'm not aware of any updated candidate's positions.
Okay.
Item thirty-three is to, that would be a matter involving, uh, pending or threatened litigation. Would be executive session. The litigation, both Maya is a request that they've made. The board has addressed that, responded to them. We're just, we really don't know where we stand with, with them in moving forward with that position at this point in time. National Grid, uh, two matters are before the board. One of them has resolved itself.
Which one was that?
That was the issue with the Meadowbrook School and the installation of electrical service by National Grid that had been, um, approved by the Department of Public Works Facilities Manager. The agreement was forwarded to, uh, the Board of Selectmen for, um, execution of an easement from the town to National Grid subsequent to the close of the annual town meeting. And so, um, I entered into discussions with representatives of National Grid indicating that we, we can't give them an easement without a town meeting vote. We're not gonna have a town meeting until the fall. And we attempted to, um, work out a resolution, one being, um, proposing that there be a, um, a license. The Board of Selectmen issue a license for National Grid to go onto the town property, install a service, and that we would present a request for an easement to town meeting in the fall for that area. There was all, that was rejected by, um, National Grid. There was also a request by National Grid as part of the easement for an overly broad ability to, um, enter the property at any time, to patrol the property, to, you sort of have, um, almost, um, ownership rights to access the property. And I had said to them, although it's not a legal issue, I said, "I, this is a school. I've got some concerns with just allowing, um, your people without some prior notice or approval from the, at least the principal or the school department, or somebody in town that you're gonna be there. This is gonna upset parents potentially." And, and even, we couldn't, basically, we danced around with that for about two months. To make a, a short story endless, um, basically what happened, we couldn't come to an agreement. National Grid understood, when they finally, uh, we finally sat down and said, "Look, we gotta make a decision here." National Grid agreed that they would install a service. They would not ask for a license. They would not ask for an easement. And all the town had to commit to do is, in the fall, when we have a town meeting, they would give us the dimensions of the easement that they're looking for and the language as to what they need for access to the easement. And if acceptable to the board, we would then submit it to the town meeting for approval. So, that's where we are. The service is going in, but that's the story, is how we got to that point.
Oh, okay.
A long way to get there.
Well, you know, I was sweating a little bit, and I was like, "Well, this could be a problem."
No, no, it's, well, we all, we all thought it was for a while, but it got resolved.
Okay, great.
Um, the other one is a request from National Grid. Apparently, back in the forties, um, National Grid's predecessor came before the then Board of Selectmen and received an approval under, uh, chapter one sixty-six of the general laws to install, um, an electric line that ran over, uh, the major road, Shaker Road, and a few other, uh, public ways in the community. Since that approval, uh, fifty years ago, or sixty years ago, or seventy years ago, I guess now, the town has approved half a dozen subdivision roadways that now run underneath that, um, easement line. And so, now, National Grid is looking to upgrade their, um, easement line, and they're looking to, for the board to, um, approve, once it's, uh, for submitted for them, approve, um, the current location of the lines over the new public ways that have been established. And so, their letter was saying, "You don't need to hold a public hearing. The board can just approve them, uh, once they've had a chance to consider it." And so, it's really an issue for the board to consider.
I'd like to ask a question through the board. That, that was approved, how many years ago? Fifty years?
In the forties.
Yeah, cause I, I, I read that, and I, I saw where there's a lot of streets that, that's gonna go over, huh?
There are, but they're only asking for like four or fi- it seems to me there would be a lot more. But they're only asking really for four or five, and they seem to be the streets that are in the, the Davis Development, uh, down by Shaker Road in that area. I don't know what the specific-
Nottingham and all those.
Uh, yes, some of them.
Showed going across those.
Yeah. Um, but as I understand it from speaking with their representatives, the, the easements that they're gonna be, that they're going to be requesting are those that are where they're existing now. It's, it's, there's no change or no new things going to be added.
Yeah, let me ask you a question, Mr. Donahue, is, are we gonna catch flak from people even though that was approved that many years ago? Because like you say, though, developments one and after.
You know-
And, and I don't think, I don't think some of those people really knew that.
Let me, let me, to answer your question, no matter what decision you're gonna make, on any issue, you're gonna catch flak. The question is how much, and how to best avoid it. Now, you're not required by statute to hold a hearing or to have discussion. But to address that concern, you could notify the people who are but the sections of these roadways where their request is made and say, "Come on in, you can see what's going on, to understand it." My experience is that when people don't know what's going on, they get concerned. Where if you explain it to them-
Yeah, right.
A lot of times, they don't have any question. It's, it's not really a big issue, but if they don't know, it becomes an issue.
But the people actually have no recourse, right? I mean, cause it's been approved, pre-approved many years ago?
No, I, I, I think you could say, "No, we don't want it to run over the street." I think you could say that because they have never gotten the approvals that they needed. They're trying to clear up, uh, a glitch, I think, in their systems where they never came back when the roads came in. I, I, I think people, it's one of those situations, as I understand it, Mr. Gorman, the line's up, service has been there, it's been there for, you know, a dozen years, maybe, or somewhere in that range, where people are used to seeing it, so it's not gonna be really a concern. But someone might have a question, they might have a concern, and it can't hurt you to bring them in and say, "Here's what they're doing. Have, have somebody from National Grid here to explain it."
I mean, cause, cause when I say that to them, when I bought my property, it showed an easement, or it could be an easement through my property, you know? I just wanna, that happen to those people if they knew about it.
No, I don't think they ever would have really known it because I don't, well, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a blanket easement line across, um, they would know about the easement line. This is cross, this is just the area crossing the public ways that they have now. But people might have concerns. So, uh, you don't have to hold a public hearing, but if you wish to bring people in, you have the right to do it.
Yeah.
Um, Senator Federici, do you have any?
I must have thought the same thing you did, that it'd be nice if you do that, have National Grid come in and say, "This is what we're doing."
National Grid to come in and, and say what's what.
And have National Grid answer the questions.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that would be a great idea. Is there a timeline?
Nope.
Cause I didn't see one in the document that was provided. Are you inclined to, um, have a hearing? And let National Grid come in? I am, I am as well, Mr. Federici. So-
Let them answer the question.
So, let me ask you this. Do we, um, set the date, or do we allow them to, um?
I think you could have, it might make some sense to have the town administrator contact them and say, "The board has determined that they won't hold a public hearing on this. Uh, we'd like your people here to present your position, and to answer questions, give us dates. Here's the board's meeting dates, gives a date in the next couple of weeks or month, or two, that you're available."
If there's no timeline that we're talking about here, um, people go away for the summer. So, we're talking about September? How about October? Is that what, September gets the people all into school and, and everything, and there's no timeline? There's no rush, right?
Well, I, I, there's no timeline that they specified, and the lines are already up. So, they presented it as a, as a, "Oh, by the way, let's just fill in the group."
Okay, so let's look at October. Uh, Paul, is there anything, um, that, I mean, that comes along?
I don't think I've got anything.
Oh, on a Wednesday evening? Okay. I don't have a problem with that, do you?
No.
Okay, so October fifteenth in the evening, um, that's enough notice for them to get somebody in line to get here?
It's enough notice for them to build the whole line over.
I think so too, but you know, there should be no excuses for that. So, Nick, if you could make that happen? Okay.
And the final item for, for open session is just a notice of withdrawal of a civil service bypass appeal. Council for, uh, the candidate has filed a notice of withdrawal, and a copy is in the packet.
Okay. With that said, I will, this could be very, yes.
Pardon me for interrupting, but is the board intending to take action and/or execute those bond agreements this evening?
Well, we do, I was, that's exactly what I was thinking. Because we need, hm, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session with regards to non-union contract negotiations to reopen-
And, and pending-
And pending litigation.
Because to go to a whole discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the interests of the community.
Just what he said. To reopen to, um, open session after a recess, to have the opportunity to review these documents.
And execute them if determined appropriate.
If termed appropriate.
So moved?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
Nope.
Um, understanding that if we can't get through these tonight, um, we can, um, move it. Recession, and then we, we can't recess and reconvene tomorrow?
No, you gotta reschedule.
We'd have to reschedule. And so, two days from today would be on Thursday?
Assuming that the-
It'd be on Friday.
It'd be on Friday, whatever time you mean, well-
Okay, well, let's not get there yet, if we have to. Uh, we can come, after we recess, we can come back and, um-
And that would be part of the consideration of the motion.
And that'll be part of the consideration of the motion. So, it's been first, uh, it's been moved and seconded, all, and we've had a little discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Gorman?
Yes.
Selectman Federici?
Yes.
Selectman Gorman? We're back into open session. There are two things that, uh, need to be resolved. One is with regards to the reveal of the bonding, um, documents that have been, uh, presented to us today. We are going to, I will entertain a motion to, um, reconvene on Friday at ten o'clock to have the bonding, uh, documents signed, um, if that is to the pleasure of our board.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The only other thing that I would like to bring up, um, there was an issue of mail being opened that was not addressed, um, mail. Let me say this another way. What is the expectation of somebody who is to mail something to the town hall that is addressed to any one of us, our selectmen here?
I cannot speak to the intent of some person who is mailing a letter to any one of the, of the board members. I think the issue that I need to respond to, or to get an answer from the Secretary of State's office, who oversees the public records request, is how the Secretary of State views letters and correspondence, or documents, or materials that are sent to a municipal office building addressed to either the office or to, um, a designated individual. For example, let's say the Office of the Board of Selectmen, Attention, Paul Federici. Is that letter, in the eyes of the Secretary of State, a letter of public record? Or is it a letter addressed individually to Mr. Federici, which would not be a public record? I, my own personal feeling, without doing any research on it, cause I've never had to deal with this issue, is that where it's addressed to the office, even though it's to attention to one particular person, that it's intended to be part of the public record. But, um, that may not be the intent of the sender, and it may be that the Secretary of State's office has a different interpretation of respect to that. Although normally, they are very expansive in what they consider to be public records. So, a, a letter that's sent to you at home, uh, is having no address or relationship to the, um, Board of Selectmen's office, even though it may deal with what you, one of your duties or powers as a member of the Board of Selectmen, might very well not be determined to be a public record, although a very, very broad reading of the statute could require, could, could assume that it would be. But the issue of a letter sent to the Board of Selectmen's office addressed to, or to the attention of one of the selectmen, I need to get a spin on how the state interprets that, because I, I think it's, it's a close call, and I think that they, that I, my, my feeling is that they would say that it's a public record and it needs to be kept, a copy of it needs to be kept in the office. But I reserve the right to follow up on that and get back with a-
But I think the public should know that currently what is happening is that if something is addressed to any of us, it is, the mail is being opened. And it, it, I don't, I'm not sure of the rhyme or reason. I will go as far as saying, "I received a packet that was addressed to me, that was opened, and it was clearly not something, um, that should have been opened, in my eye." The, I think if it is going to be that way, I think we, we have a, a duty to inform our constituents that if it's something of a personal nature, not to send it to this office, because if they're going to be opening it, it could, if it's not meant to be seen by other eyes, then they should know that. I, I think, I, I, I don't believe that, um, I have some strong feelings about having my mail opened. I thought that was protected under law, so I would appreciate it if you would check that out. So, at least we can all have the same expectations.
I, I will get, I will get back to you and the rest of the board members with that. But just to, to sort of bring the thing more into focus-
Sure.
That, my understanding and my experience with municipal departments, that materials that are sent to the office, the person who's in charge of that office, be it the town administrator in the Selectmen's office, or the director of public works in the Department of Public Works, that they are designated, um, usually are considered to be the keepers of the records, of the public records of that particular, uh, department. And so, material that is sent in to the office, usually their staff is directed to open that material and get it to the appropriate person. And without regard as to whether it's, with, the assumption is that it's a public document and needs to be opened. Now, it would be, it might be different if the letter were addressed, say, to Mr. Gorman or to yourself, and it said on it, "Personal," in large, you know, letter, red letters, it said, "Personal." Then, there's at least a knowledge on the part of the employees opening that there is an issue as to whether it's a public record or not a public record. But where it's just sent to the attention of, without any indication that it's not municipal, my belief is that most departments in the state, municipal departments in the state, when that mail came in, the staff would just open the mail and put it in the pile of the person that it's addressed, or however it's dispersed to the, the members. But, uh, that's my assumption, and I, and I can't speak-
I just, I just think we need to look into that. And then, the other question is with regards to letters that may be, um, public record, i.e., the, uh, chief of police. If he were to send a letter to me, when should I expect to be notified that that letter has been sent to me? Should that, should I be known about it once it's in- Should that, should I be known about it once it's in, on an agenda, or should I, as soon as it's open, should I be receiving notice of that?
Again, that can be controlled by the policy and procedures adopted by the various boards or departments with respect to that, but my expectation would be, if there's a letter specifically addressed to an individual Board of Selectmen, that it would go in their mail pile, and whatever their practice is of coming in and reviewing their mail, that a, a letter that came in on Tuesday would be in the pile, if they didn't come in till Friday, they wouldn't know about it till Friday. But if they came in on Wednesday, they'd know it then, unless the board's directive is, when mail comes in, addressed to a specific selectman, notify us that it's here, or fax it to us, or however the dispersment is gonna be made. But I, I think it's, without clear direction to staff as to how those things should be handled, I think it's, they're just doing what they think is the most appropriate way to handle it. I hope that answers your question. I'm good at dodging answering questions, I've been doing it for years.
Getting paid for it.
I would look forward to hearing the response to that.
I will, I will let you know what I find out from the Secretary of State, how they interpret that situation, because they're really the driving force, it really doesn't matter what I say, because if they disagree with it, then we're gonna end up in an issue of litigation as to how it should be handled, so it's, it's much easier to go to them and say, tell me how you're gonna enforce this, so we can all play by the same rules. All right?
All right.
Thank you very much.
That doesn't leave any further conversation, sir? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we are adjourned for the evening, gentlemen.
All in favor?
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.